The road as it is now. Is that what you're...
That's right. I was looking for something on the tree. All right, let me call order. That's seven oh three. We'll go over two sets of draft notes we have. Starting Wednesday, July 7.
Sorry.
Do you need a second sheet?
There are three extra copies of tonight's packet if anyone would like to print a copy. Of yourself.
Oh, this is the whole packet?
Ah, yes.
I just wanted to leave this here for you because there was a question the other day as to where it would look like from Bigelow to the West Hill. So, I helped you out there.
Kyle, is it okay if we just bring up questions as we run into them?
Yeah, I think that'd be nice.
These have been a long, so... Um, okay, well, I have the first question. Um, and I think, uh, may need... Maybe for... May need help from Zach, too. But lines twenty-nine and thirty. It says, "Mr. Harris asks if there would be changes to the power lines on Manatnok Street and/or Dort Street." Mr. Parks responded that he did not think so. I...
I think it should read that Dort Street should not be upgraded, but isn't Manatnok upgraded?
Isn't it the other way around, though? Where... Okay.
Dort Street already has three phases because of the Y tube now.
Yeah.
Big ol' hill would have to upgrade in three phases. I think the question was Manatnok.
This is Manatnok.
Yeah, that's the last one. Only for Manatnok?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
If Manatnok does have three phases on it, it runs only in the center of town and then the St. Peter that goes up toward. So, full answer would be, it's existing three phases. Don't expect it to be upgraded. That's, you know, not my call, not my scope. Bigelow would do exactly that.
Okay, so Bigelow is where the... The... The left-hand flip would come into play with the three phase.
Yep.
But Dort Street could just be what's there today. That's my vote. All right, so, sorry, I... That was my misunderstanding. The minutes are correct. In fact, it seems like minutes are fine.
Line one twenty-five. One twenty-four, one twenty-five. I think it said the town of Troy could receive a ten percent discount now, just if it applies. That's our bill. We could if we purchased the credits. So, that will should be could. Oh. Line one forty. One thirty-one, one forty. Should it be... Says, "Woolley responded, 'I'd like information, pilot for the record to show everyone in the sense the planning board will make a decision on the project.'" Should it be for when the planning board makes the decision? No. Make a decision, I think.
I think, um, Mr. Woolley was just clarifying that he wasn't going to be deciding anything, it was the planning board that was going to be deciding.
Please, if that's something more clear, that's what he was saying. This is the saying. Period. The planning board will be making the decision on the project. Just...
Yeah, I mean, that's... I can clarify, but that's what Mr. Woolley was saying, and that whole phrase is what Mr. Woolley is... That's him.
No, they just should say for when the planning board will be making. That way, kind of, they can see what the information is for that decision.
Good, uh, good evening, caller. I hope you can hear us. Um, you've joined the Troy Planning Board meeting and our first order business is reviewing the minutes of August seventh. And, uh, if you... Uh, if you could, uh, introduce yourself, please, for our minutes.
Do you remember, is it star six, star nine, or star nine?
No. They're in front. So... I can't just remember.
Yeah, I can.
I could be wrong. Line one ninety-eight. Maybe you can just... You'd expect utility upgrades to come in March of twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six? I thought it was twenty twenty-five, because then you'd start here.
This year is twenty twenty-four, so is it six?
Twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, I'd get like the last, uh...
We would start our construction...
Before utility upgrades.
Before it. But not so far before it, where we finish prior to their completion. We want to finish a couple of months before they do.
Okay. So, make sure I have the page right.
Yep. Similar to the comment on the power lines. It's my estimate.
Good evening again, caller. Uh, this is, again, this is the planning board meeting, and I muted you due to some static during hearing, but if you need to unmute, uh, use star six on your phone. Star six, so you can unmute. Hi, were you unmuted yourself to introduce yourself?
See, we all do, we know stuff technology. Sorry. Curtis didn't say dick should be covered in fur, so I just assumed it ran late.
Kyle, I'm, I'm fine with the minutes. I'm done. I...
I can...
There's the change to, uh, one word and...
I can make that motion.
The motion to amend and approve the minutes, changing line one twenty-five, uh, to could receive, and changing line one forty to for when the planning board makes the decision on the project.
I've got the map. Any discussion? Callers in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Change. Change. So passes. But, so, that was... I salute you. Those who go here. Running on the second site walk in minutes. Thank you, having the notes.
I, I have to say, there were some times where I couldn't hear every, you know, all the conversations. Uh, so if there are things that members feel are missing, I encourage you to speak up. Because I may just... May not have heard it clearly or heard it at all.
There was one thing in the minutes that I found. Bill Harris was the person's name, holding the wrong person's name.
In the previous minutes?
In the minutes, the walkthrough at Lynch's, Mr. Harris. That wasn't his name. I mean, Russell, I think that could be, was Russell. That was his daughter's married name. I don't remember what his... Who his name was. He just said he was Becky Russell's dad, and I just put Russell in my head. It wasn't Russell.
Oh, okay. Well, it's...
I don't think none matters. Yes, I worry much, but I think they were misrepresented.
These are the site walk minutes you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, when I mentioned someone on West Hill had mentioned, and I got the name wrong. Because it was Becky Russell's dad, and I just put Russell in my head, but that's her married name. And when I did the cards, you'll do it, it was, I saw, I mean, I can't remember what it was now.
No, I can't find it.
No, I can't find it.
It's on the last page. In that paragraph at the top of the page.
Yeah.
Says...
Yeah, it says Bill Russell. So, Russell's not his last name. It was once elected, it was up on this, it was up on West Hill, and Becky Russell's his daughter. So, I just put that in my head. This isn't his last name. It's not his last name. It's his daughter's last name.
There's no... I mean, so it should read Becky Russell?
No. Just, just want to just cross out the name and just say off the country western road.
So, spoke with a Troy resident of West Hill Road.
Yeah, there you go. Just getting his name out, because it's not right.
These are numbered. But, page four. Second paragraph up to the bottom. Miss Samuel's shame commission of the stream that under the prayers of Neil Rocks, but she will not see the road over top. Should say over the floor? Is that why it was meant?
Uh, yeah. We have seen the water come over the road.
Yes, over the floor.
Yeah.
Seen the stream over top of the road, I guess, is...
Pretty close, but not there.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what I would... I meant to...
Yeah, I think over top is the more appropriate word, over the floor.
Oh, sure. So, I'll move to approve the minutes with two amendments. Um, removing the name Bill Russell from the third line of page five. Replacing it with a resident of West Hill Road. Replacing the phrase, the road over topped on...
Page four.
Thank you. To say the stream over topped the road.
I'll back it now.
Any discussion? Callers in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Spentions?
Aye, fifteen.
And you have these. So, no passes. If you're that way. Um, so... This... Order new business, town follow-up consultant, is she here?
Yes, she is. It's in the...
We have her present herself, don't you... Leave or stay?
Hi, I'm Amanda Cross. Um, I've been working with the setup board and just going through the files throughout the, um, the office and the building. Do you mind if I step in?
Of course not.
Um, so I just had a couple of, um, basic questions, uh, about your files. Um, I was curious if you have any, like, filing systems in place currently? Um, I know you have a bunch of file cabinets, and I was curious if you, um, have any feelings on how many file cabinets we need. We're looking to get yours more.
So, we don't really have a system of filing cabinets themselves?
Sure.
As to answer of how many filing cabinets we need?
Mm-hmm.
Kind of a little question, I think.
You might be more welcome to answer that at the moment.
I think we... I think we would take a recommendation from you based on what we find.
Okay.
To what you're feeling we need to grow. So, say, you have fifteen years and you used five bins. You could share that one file cabinet for five years type thing.
Yeah.
I think we would look to you to recommend something to us.
Okay, that works. I just wanted to see if you had any opinions on it.
Could be, you know, some years of, you don't have much, and then this year we have a very, very big site plan, so...
Yeah, I definitely noticed that.
So, I mean, it's hard to answer that question, but I think we would look to you for a recommendation.
Okay, that sounds good. Um, and...
Just, uh, just a minute. Elizabeth, don't be shy. I know you've been working with our files on a more routine basis than members have, so...
Yeah, and I, I get to...
Have you already talked with her?
Work with her often, so this is more of a...
Yeah.
Yes. Just wanted to...
Just extra.
Yeah. Extra input.
Um, there, I noticed there are a lot of, um, like, site plans and studies and stuff. Are those things, obviously, but like, are those things that could be put online to help shrink your physical needs out?
I think they require people to send a paper file.
Sure.
Or not?
Some type of thing.
I'm not sure how long we have to...
We are, I think there's a, a time of, uh, right?
Well, minutes have to be there forever.
That's right.
Um, in these site plans, if you, you don't file them any longer in the registry, so those need to be captured with an application for practice forever, basically. But, certainly, some of the studies, that would be a judgment call. Some of those things could probably... But certain, some of the studies, that would be a judgment call. Some of those things could probably be, you know, if they're longer...
Supporting documents to the site plan could be electronically provided.
Yes, yeah, yes.
But the site plans themselves have to be kept.
Yes, okay. That makes, oops, that makes sense. And I noticed you have a form store over there, so you can just, like, grab forms at will. Um, is that something you think you want or is that something you, um, I feel like a lot of those could probably also be put online? So you could access them remotely and so can the public. I don't know if that's something you'd be open to.
I think most of them are online.
Yeah, a lot of them are, yeah. I know the site plan review and the checklist, everything is online there.
The issue is they're just, they're not like digital forms, so any, a lot of people who need to complete them do, I think, come in for a hard copy.
Yeah, but usually I print off.
You just print off?
Yeah.
So I, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, we defer to you, Elizabeth, I'm...
There are ways to make the forms typable too, so that people can fill it out and then submit it to you, if that's something that would work. Um, I don't know if that's anything you'd even be interested in.
Is that part of your, like, something you're doing for the town right now?
I do know how to do it. I need to feel out, um, if that's something they want me to do.
I would say we're interested, potentially.
Sure.
Like...
Yeah, I think it's a streamlined process.
Okay.
Makes it easier for us.
Do you have any, like, any things that stand out to you that you could think of that would help you streamline the process? I know I'm putting everyone on the spot.
A PDF, you know, fillable form.
Yeah.
For, like, our most commonly used applications are subdivisions, plot line adjustments, site plan review. Um, but we have some other forms. They're not long. They're like one to three pages.
Yeah, that's right.
I guess I'm looking to do them all. We can do one, do them all. We're on the same page. Not for a couple of years, we should have done this one.
Yeah.
I think it'd be all or nothing.
Sure. Yep, I...
Otherwise every couple of years, hey, we need one more done.
For sure. I can totally appreciate that. Um, and then as for the files, I've been going through the planning board files and using, because your files are oftentimes really complete. And so I have been using them to complete the select board files for things they're missing. Um, if the select board wants me to go through and like tidy up your files as well as as something you'd want me to do, just like consolidate it down, clear labeling, I'm not throwing anything away. Um, the only things I will say I have thrown away is in the planning, or not the planning, the select board files, there's oftentimes like seven copies of the exact same deed. So I'll just toss one or two.
I don't think we have an issue if you go through the files.
Sure.
Condensing, organizing, that helped Abby out, that helped us out.
Okay. Should I primarily consult with Abby on that sort of stuff?
I think so. If there's any questions that she has or you have on certain files, set them aside and we can reveal in our next meeting and say, hey, guys, keep these, file these, these aren't needed.
Super.
So you don't, you don't have to make the decision like, oh, obviously, if you keep it or not.
Yeah, absolutely.
If you question something, save it for Abby to bring here. We can look at all of our devices. It's easy checking out.
Okay, that sounds good. Um, and we sort of briefly discussed retention periods. I've been going over a bunch of those. I know each and every record has its own, so... I think that's probably really most of it. I just wanted to make sure, um, everything was going smooth and, um, see if you had any ideas. Um, as for the file cabinets, I was thinking, and this is just me throwing out my initial thoughts, is probably four cabinets with map storage. So, um, like that. If we can get that, because there's, I think there's some upstairs we might be able to get downstairs, maybe. So, um, that's everything, I guess. I don't want to take up too much of your time.
Yeah, I really like the map storage one, because it would be nice if the site plans already have folded out, it's easier to flip through them.
Yeah.
Sometimes you go check file cabinet, she will know those, try to find a site plan that pulled it up. You sit there and unfold.
Oh, yeah.
Hold it back up, do the next one.
And then you get it wrong by just one little fold. Um, yeah, I've been going through that quite a bit.
So, yeah, I think that's how it would definitely be good. Again, I think we'd look to you for recommendations.
Sure.
To kind of sort it.
Okay.
What you think we need.
That sounds great. I like that plan and, um, I will touch base either through Abby or however. Awesome. I appreciate it. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. So, did we not get anything back on our paint seats, correct?
Nothing. Nothing on our paint through, like, so few or anything like that. Yeah, no, I didn't change through the office here.
Alright, so, I'd like to go to you. I would like to look at the request variance on Door Street. I think we should kind of tap those. Since those have kind of loose ties on Door Street. Door Street probably seem to have the least opposition. So since these are all figured, probably one we can focus on those two, we can go that way and then we can focus, you know, later later on, Bigelow Hill.
Um, Kyle, you might want to consider, um, if John has, uh, time commitments or maybe handling his questions and correspondence, uh...
Yeah, just... You want to go over his letter, because it does kind of cover Door Street too.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, John, were you planning on staying around for like the whole meeting or were you mainly here to, uh, you know, share the letter and...
I'll hang out a little bit.
Okay.
Has Zach seen the letter?
Uh, don't, not, I don't think so.
I'm gonna give him a copy and read it. That way if he has questions for John.
I just would want to be sensitive to, um, John's time, but... Your plane sounds, sounds good flying though.
Yeah, you're good. I don't have to get to school tomorrow, so.
Right. If you had to pick one, would you prefer the shim or the bond for Door Street?
I'd rather have the shim after everything's done.
Because you have to guarantee something for the amount of deal.
Bigelow Hill, I would rather the bond.
Well, yeah, there's nothing existing there to fix, so to speak. They're doing upgrades anyways.
We had a couple culvers that tend to sink over time. Took mine, mine goes up.
It's always one.
Set a speed bump and then it might go up.
Also length of Door Street.
You gotta go for the bond.
I was saying, I guess, uh...
You want to go all the way to the waste water treatment pipe, not just the drainage pipe?
I'd do it all the way to the waste water treatment. Right from gate.
And I assume before structure starts, you want to meet with them, go over additional road, take pictures, they're all on the same page?
Yeah. Then once they're closed and done, I'd go through, upgrade all the structures that I need to, all the pipes that I need to. If there's any water services that need to be upgraded, I'd do that all at the same time, fully implement a shim. And that would knock that off the list. See what's money. Don't get a lot there.
That was good, Susan.
Hey, Carol, just to make sure we're, we're not too far off base, uh, how, uh, well, I think this is useful information, you know, from highway department. Where does, where do these ideas connect with the planning board's process and like potential conditions? Or are these things that are usually part of like a planning board conditional approval or are these things that get handled directly between like the select board and the applicant or the department and the applicant?
If, if there is compelling evidence that a project for the planning board would cause, would have an impact on a road, then yes, the planning board can certainly impose some conditions around that. What needs to happen, however, is some kind of balance between how much of that impact is going to be due solely to the proposal. You know, there needs to be generally some sharing between the new use and the people who are continuing to use it and who benefit from that. So it's not uncommon that the applicant is not required to pay the entire cost of whatever improvements would be made. You know, unless they were the only ones who would be using it, for example. So that's something that, um, may not be resolvable immediately. There, we probably have to do some discussion with the selectman and loan agent. And also regarding the, the bond, particularly on, um, on Bigelow Hill. Because that's, that one in particular is kind of beyond the planning board's purview because of the classic status. So the selecting will have to decide what's going to happen with that. But for Door Street, you can discuss how much improvement is really tied to the project and therefore will be required to offset that.
Okay, um, and, and what about the performance or the road bond for Bigelow Hill? Would that be in the purview of the planning board?
No, that again, that would, that would be the selectman's.
Okay.
Correct. Because of, they, they're going to be the ones to decide what is going to happen to Bigelow Hill.
Okay. So we should forward this letter to the select board with our recommendations, saying that there is a good relation to a site plan for legal development. Do you have any questions for the road agent on reading the letter?
I don't think so. I think the only comment I'd have is, I think, with respect to Door Street, we're talking about hypothetical damage. And I'm willing to sign up for to find the spec of damage and repairing that damage.
Yeah.
In a road agreement or some similar format, right? That basically says, here's the current state of the road, here's how we want it to look, even better at the end of the, the construction period. If we negatively damaged the road, we will repair it to spec X, Y, Z.
Right.
And then we'll also, we could say spec X, Y, Z, as quoted by three road builders, say it's $300,000. In order to protect my obligation, I'd be willing to bond for $300,000. We do it. After the work was done, we get, we disappear the bond. But, um, that's generally, you know, I've seen public road agreements. So that makes sense to me. Is that what we're all talking about right now?
Yeah.
We're not saying, I'm agreeing to upgrade a road after construction. I'm saying, the road is what it is. There's, there's a plausible potential for me impacting the road negatively and we need a spec to which to repair it to if, yes, okay, so...
Yeah, that's why I went with the, the shim.
Yeah.
Because it would be a micro paid, so we just, whatever damage that potentially could be done, we'll bring it back to what the current state is.
Okay, so that's...
We need to overlay it again with base hot pot.
So that's perfectly acceptable to me. Damage I do gets repaired. We have a general number by which we think that repair would cost if I ghosted everyone and we bonded that amount. That's, in my opinion, a very reasonable condition for Door Street permits. I think we have a little bit of, Carol and I would have to work on the wording a little bit, because not only is there potentially a portion for the town that I don't think I'm too worried about. It's more two projects, two approvals. We might want to say the first, you know, there's some sharing where 60% of my project company, this one, that one, whatever. Oh, I think we can figure that out based on some math. Um, so that makes perfect sense to me on Door Street as an existing class five or better road. Um, Bigelow is still a little bit ambiguous to me how we're going to proceed. I think if I explain how I see it today, is we're going to upgrade Bigelow Hill Road up to, we're just past the proposed site entrance to a certain spec that we haven't yet determined that meets class five or better. Whether that road will become class five or not, it still seems like an open question for the board, for the select board and for the town generally. Obviously, if it becomes class five, there's responsibility for the town to maintain. If I upgrade to a class five spec, but it doesn't become a class five road, it's still up to me to maintain. So I don't particularly care one way or another, but I think it's just important that we define the spec and we define whether we're formally going up to class five or we're keeping it at class six, but it improved to class six to the last standards, if you guys follow that. So I just need that direction. And then similar to the Door Street, east and west potential damage quote, this is different. Once we have a spec, we have a cost, we bond that cost, I think. Those concepts are perfectly fine. Obviously, there's less of a chance of me walking away from improving the road, because I've got to improve to get out there, but I'm perfectly happy to bond it. We bond, we bond things all the time. Of course, we're bonding the decommissioning twenty years from now, so we're perfectly happy to bond any road improvement or repair. Um, we don't have any significant plantings, but you can imagine a scenario where we're right up against somebody's home and we do extensive screening, often we bond landscaping if there's not, in this case, so very standard for product towns.
I mean, as a highway department, I would like to see that part of Bigelow Hill upgrading to class five and then maybe not this year, take it over. If the town is off, maybe two years, three years down the road.
Yeah, I, I just, I want to chat with my attorney about it one way or the other, but my instinct is it wouldn't matter to me one way or another whether it was or wasn't. But I don't know the benefits. If there's benefits to the town for having more road, then great. If there's not, then great. My layman's instinct was you don't want to pave it, but if there's other benefits to having more road footage, great.
That's the one thing, upgrade to a class five, even if it doesn't get adopted, it's still to be paved from the existing pavement to where it ends.
Yeah.
But it would help the highway department out with block grant money that would be that extra however many feet, you know, goes toward lane miles.
Yep.
That would help us out to fix everything else in town and keeping it on that road.
Yep. Great. That's, feels fine.
John, could you clarify, did you say if it's upgraded to a five, it has to be paved?
It does. So where the existing pavement ends and it turns to class six, if you upgrade that, you have to continue that pavement to the end of where the class five upgrade is. And then if you go back to bracket, it'll be done.
So it sounds like our specification would be any upgrades will be paid.
That's something you and I need to meet on and talk about.
It's more, the other gentleman that was next with me, the civil engineer of records, means a little out of my purview to talk about road base grading, excavating, the whatever. So you guys would theoretically communicate on what's the road spec that you want. Um, it sounds like it's just a match once there's now a match you'll continue. So we would just define that, add that as a detail to the plan and I think that would be that. In terms of when the road became class five, we just have to talk about that, right? I think making the permit condition on the road becoming class five gets complicated because of kind of order of operations. But again, I think my attorney's will help us with the, the steps. But again, I think my attorneys will help us with the steps that that takes.
Yeah.
And if the board of select can, yeah, we don't have to talk very, but I just want to understand the different steps and the process behind making it where it's classified.
Yeah.
So upgrading that road, there's an old stone cobra, when you upgrade to class five, do they have to upgrade that cobra? Is that a requirement when you upgrade a road?
Yes.
Have you brought it up?
Yeah, when we walked in, it had already collapsed and it's already, I don't understand it from a, it's already failed or whatever.
Yeah. I believe it was checked, it's not historical, but it would.
But you can partially preserve that.
Right.
Overhaul zone. I know you can take the top off and set plastic over it and then re-top it with that old imperial. You just have to fill in that box with stone and gravel. That way, the top portion of the slide will fall.
So you can keep that historical look that.
Right. You can cut that plastic like short so it fits in that box over so you don't see it when you're driving over.
Make it a long haul.
Is the road on the line enough for class five?
Yeah.
The line is definitely. Why is the class five definitely?
It's got to be at least 17 feet. But the counterweight is stone over stone.
It must have four rods or something like that.
Technically, it's a three rod road.
Okay, there's a lot of stuff to keep track of, of course, for this, but with the road classification, it seems like we're, there's some consensus maybe from, or there's some interest in it being upgraded to class five specs. Does, would that be?
Advance a question to the select board.
Yeah, with, again, is that like a planning board condition thing or outside of planning board?
I think the spec of the road, when we're bringing it up to this planning board, whether or not it becomes class five, if the town adopts it, it becomes a select board question.
That's, that's how I see it exactly.
So we can specify paved, repair stone cobra with a new class of liner. We can do those requirements and then.
I, I think that, that you can't make that decision. I think whatever happens to Bigelow Hill has to be the selectman's decision and that includes the specs. Because they will, they could decide, for example, that it just have to be, it has to be approved enough to get this equipment over it and maybe not even, they could decide that it didn't need to be paved. We don't know that. That's entirely up to them.
So that's going to be all the select.
Yeah, what they decide to do about that. And once they decide on the specs, then that of course will, will determine what any bonding would be.
Okay. So we're kind of a parallel process. Yeah, we would, we should, it sounds like, write to the, we, or we could write to the board selectmen, say these issues were brought before us, you know, we think such and such would work out between the three of you.
I think you guys should have some kind of dip point to say on it.
It sounds like that we would be, we would need to show up at one of their meetings where it's discussed instead of in the site plan review process.
Am I allowed to ask a question?
Uh, yes, you can ask a question.
So I thought it was my understanding, in order for me to build up there, the road needed to be upgraded to a class five. We went through this two meetings ago and you finally found it in the statutes and bylaws. And you said yes, we need to be upgraded to a class five in order to be able to build there. Like anybody else who's going to build, it has to be on a class five road. I can't build up there.
It doesn't.
I can't build up there. I can't drive onto that piece of property and put a house.
You can't rent a house.
So why should you build, put a 35 acre solar field on the same piece of property where I couldn't put a house? It's in the bylaws.
What's in the bylaws?
That it has to be a.
We're not talking about whether or not it has to upgrade, we're talking about the specifications we specified by the select.
The, this, are you talking about the solar bylaws?
No, I'm talking about the building bylaws.
Okay.
The town. You can't build a class six road. Anything. Who's the 35 acre solar array?
Well, I may have given a misimpression, a class five road could, it does not have to be paid by DLT standards or by any law, so when I say.
It has to be a class five.
That it could be gravel. A class five road can certainly be gravel.
But it has to be class five.
Yes, yes, a class five means that it's maintained by the town, but it does not have to be paid. That again.
So again, that comes back to the select board.
Yes.
We determined that's what needs to be done.
Yes.
The specifications on that have to go in the select board.
Yes.
That wasn't my question, it has to be class five. Whether it's paved or gravel, doesn't matter, it has to be class five.
Standards, yes.
Correct. I think.
Just to clarify, standards or actually a class five Troy town road?
That would be up to the select.
I'm here to give the things.
They're going to, just clarify me wrong, you're going to build the class five standards, probably you're going to have to anyway to get some of that equipment over it. But whether we adopt it is whether it becomes a class five road for Troy.
I was thinking, I thought I heard Ms. Sandman said that we had answered before that it had to be a class five road, not just standard, but actually a Troy road to build.
That can happen by, that's a legislative action, it's not a construction action. The selectmen could decide, for example, as John had pointed out before correctly, that the town could start to maintain that road right now and at five years of maintenance, it becomes a class five road. Or they could take it to town meeting and say, we want this to be a class five road. It could stay in that same condition and they could say it's a class five road. But when there's a project, it's unlikely that the selectmen would, would say that to say, okay, we want you to upgrade it to be standard, which, you know, is going to be material and dust and wet and colors and all that. Everything except whether or not it gets paved, that's a question they get.
And if, if it's brought up to a standard of class five, but they don't get it approved as a Troy class five road, he, he can still go.
Yes, yes. If the selectman approves that, then yes.
The original, and I know it's confusing, the original waiver was more about the standard. If you recall, if you recall, I wasn't sure what standard or spec the road was to be upgraded to. I know what my minimum standard is to get vehicles up and out, but I, I just didn't want to be presumptive about, we're going to pave it because somebody went, I don't want to pave it, but we're going to gravel it, right? So that's, that was the initial waiver was to leave the design spec to the board or boards in the town of Troy.
I think we just need to get the select board, give a drive, or we need to have them give us a recommendation, is where we're at that point.
Or we can give them a recommendation. It's ultimately their decision.
So I think we should forward this letter to the other select board, tell them our recommendations and ask what they're involved in doing. Do you think they meet next, I mean, maybe next?
I think we blow it backwards. They're going to look for our input, it's their decision.
I was just saying, give them our recommendations, send a letter with our recommendations. Oh, for their.
Yeah, we don't need their.
Well, that means their decision. Just there's a, next day. So we've got a couple days to go.
Not tomorrow.
Yeah, because it like, some months it doesn't really quite line up.
So that's, the 15.
Because they had the first Tuesday already, didn't they?
And how can, how can I be helpful here? Should I, my team coordinate with John to come up with a spec to provide to you guys so that, or are you guys just going to talk internally and say this is the spec we're going to recommend?
I, my personal opinion is if we can make a recommendation, how we like to see it is ultimately the select boards and we'll just have some input in there.
I guess I'm more me, like, I don't want to say this the right way. The spec, you guys can, you guys feel if you can draft the spec that you're going to recommend without my help, which is perfectly fine.
I don't know how specific we need to be, other than we would like, you know, make it simple as the best. If there's possible, or could you, again, it's my.
Why don't, if he's willing to work with John, and if John's willing, why don't we get the spec from John? Then we have something that we know the town, the partners, if you care about it, it's agreeable to. And then we take that, we agree with it, then give it a recommendation through the select board.
That's the only reason I brought it up, because I don't want to get circular where you guys say, build a good road and then, and then select board approves a great road and then we get stuck on whether it's good or great to have one inch minus or three, right? So I think we can put together an engineering, horrible, buildable spec as a paragraph or a picture.
And then one knows exactly what we're talking about.
And that, that'll work its way back, that would be, just to avoid that.
I think that, you guys are best though.
Can I ask that question? So this is the spec that's in the subdivision regulations and it's been here for years as the minimum DLT standards. I've tried to see if they've upgraded them at all and I can't find anything that shows that they've changed that. So, you know, it looks like the zero to 50 would be the one that would apply here, but you know, trips per day, because obviously it's not a house, so you're not going to be having, you know, 10 trips a day. Does that look reasonable or is this way out of?
No, I'm sure it's great. I'm just an English major and a former, former minor league baseball player, so that's why we'll get the right, we'll get the right people.
Oh, that would be great.
It's okay, I can pull it out of the, out of the plans, too. But I mean, that's what I mean, is just to have a paper spec that is wanted by the town and the road agent that the board selectmen can accidentally approve or deny, or reject.
Carol, I don't, I think we shouldn't be hard and fast on this. Like, for example, it talks about gravel surface instead of asphalt.
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
But I think John said, when you're extending your existing paved road, it would be, you would expect it to be paved.
That's what I'm expecting for them to have us there. Could I assume John has more up to date DLT standards to himself?
Would it be possible to have him dig through down here and?
Yeah.
We could walk it and talk about it, throw us that.
Yeah.
Can I ask that question?
Yes. Yes.
So I learned on Friday that he's going to be clear cutting the, all the trees down on the left-hand side of the road.
Yeah, this is planned, we didn't achieve.
We discussed the laws of selective cut.
Sorry, you might need to stand this one moment and come right back to it. What, what was the date of the next select were made, a week from Thursday?
August 15.
Yeah, August 15.
Okay.
They're early, what, what, I think five, the time they start.
Maybe five o'clock.
Sorry.
Um, just that, when I was talking about, we, we can ask for selective cut on that side.
So did you folks actually end up walking the piece of property or no?
Inside of the property, no.
Yes, I left you, we're just debating and I don't know whether you did or not.
No.
Discuss differences and stuff, we're not good.
Okay. So you did discuss whether or not you can leave selected trees, like one that's really really big or some of the birch trees.
Well, to make trees, my guess would be, they need to go, just the height.
So if he were to remove all the trees, would it be possible to replace it with some shrubbery? Something that's low lying that would not be.
So he did mention that there.
So we wouldn't have to see that fence.
I believe the height of growth that you have to be under is 15 feet, so anything under 15 feet.
That's what we, I think, I had, I had proposed what we call selective clear along what would be the east-west side of Dor Street, excuse me, of Bigelow on the way up alongside the project and that 75 foot buffer approximately. And if, you know, the trees that are most valuable, I imagine, to you are the bigger ones. So those are the ones that need to come down because the clearing is for shading. In this case, it would be morning shade, morning sun. And so we're not going to stump and if we did a selective clear, we would leave all the existing undergrowth. It would get somewhat damaged during the operation, but it would regenerate very, very quickly. I think we've all kind of seen these photos, right, with Dor Streets and whatnot, very aggressively cleared and it was hard to walk through there on Saturday. So I think the long way of saying, I don't think we need to propose any plantings because I think it's going to regenerate very, very quickly.
Okay, so you're not going to clear out, you're going to do something selective, is what you're saying.
The plan, the plan right now is to clear cut everything and leave only the stumps. But I'm willing to work with you and the board to come up with a selective clearing plan along that buffer to try to soften the impact.
I would greatly appreciate that.
My original thought was that it would regenerate within three or four years, but if we can do a selective clear, we can cut down that time very, very quickly. So I'm willing to add some selective clear notes along the west side of Bigelow.
So regeneration rates are a bit higher once it's cut.
Yes, very, like, it's very, very fast, but it would be, it would be even faster if we minimize the amount of.
That's why lumber quality is down.
Yeah.
To the tank.
So what?
The lumber quality. So if you look at like, back in 1900s, early 1900s, you look at a piece of lumber and you see the growth rates are really tight.
Right.
If you look at the lumber now, they're very far apart. That's because the road's so fast. So when you clear cut a selective cut, you're, you're not letting those saplings fight for the sunlight. So, right, when you eliminate that, they grow up, they're, they're going to shoot right up and that growth rate's just going to go like this. Instead of where it's fighting, it's just, it's slowly going to move. So a selective cut, clear cutting, they leave the sun for these that, that's going to come back in three or four years. And then they just come in every couple of years and maintenance, cut it to that 15 foot level. That people will be nice.
I'm willing to add that to the plan.
Can your excavators be careful of the sun holes? Did you see them when they were up, being up there? Quite significant.
Yep. That's where we're coming, the foundations on site.
Yes, the foundations on the S curve.
Yeah, I don't believe we're going to be, we intentionally avoided them with our, with our design. So it's outside of our open area.
I don't know if we go to the transfer station or not. You know, the trees around the outside of that. We have an excavator in there right now, mulching all that down. Been 24 years in the road.
I see.
So now that we're on this maintenance schedule, once this is done this year, it'll be every two years, we go in, cut it again, clear path all the way around. And eventually it'll just be grass.
John, we said, I'll talk if I, conservation commission will be sending you a letter at some point, just to kind of underline your study for that 75 foot buffer. We were wondering if the property was used to be open to the conservation commission using that 75 foot buffer, putting the birdhouses or meat houses, as kind of a whole conservation, trying to promote what wildlife can, since you are disturbing other wildlife.
Yep.
So you will be seeing a letter from us whenever you're doing your polygamy mix, just to make sure. A lot of topic, but that's kind of course wrong.
Birdhouses, bad houses.
Yeah, well, what, basically what we did is, um, I don't know if I brought it. We printed off the New Hampshire's native and cretin species and we looked at which ones would benefit from the metal polygamy mix that you proposed.
Yeah.
And then. And then, basically thought, we have a seventy-five foot buffer for thirteen hundred feet. Could you use that conservation land and find over in that commission? To try to promote these endangered crept species?
As long as it was lowercase c conservation land? Yes. That's something we've done for foxes, bat boxes, yeah, whatnot.
And that's something that the board wanted.
Some of these maps, we've done a lot of turtle habitat creations as well. Not little out here, but that's very well attractive.
I guess I do see in a letter from the conservation commission, that's very, very up, we're discussing that area.
Hey, Kyle, related to that, um, this is in the town's water resources protection district ordinance. So, anywhere there's development in, within seventy-five feet of wetlands, this applies to the Door Street properties. It spells out the application procedure. So, like, for example, application procedure A says, all applications for a building permit, subdivision or site plan shall be required to locate and depict any wetland areas, you know, that's been done. But, uh, uh, B, um, it says if the proposed activity is in or abuts the water resources protection district. Again, that's the area that's within seventy-five feet of wetlands or streams. The application will be referred to the conservation commission to determine, um, how the wetlands will be impacted.
So, maybe did send the three files to the conservation commission for us when we're done with it?
Um, so, uh, but it, this is related to what you were just talking about, and I'll come back to this. But, um, uh, so the C says, in the event that wetlands will be affected, actually, we know they are, because they, they outlined those areas. It says the conservation commission will make written recommendations to the planning board. So, I'd say, like, instead of sending, I think how this is meant to work is this conservation commission.
Two parts, conservation commission will send you the letter for the wetland issue.
Yeah.
We're looking at that buffer zone, which doesn't have a weather issue.
Yep.
But, try the real estate conservation commission to put some stuff to help promote.
I see, it's like a mitigation project or something.
It's like a little, hey, this is the end of that, what can we do something with it?
I think that qualifies as a written recommendation. It's like, we see these impacts, this is what we recommend is done. But, I guess what I'm saying is, address it to the planning board too, because it's, seems like it's meant to be part of our, permitting, part of the town's permitting process.
I really, you know, the problem, you have to make a note in that letter, is that, that little buffer project will not be, say, gay or made a project, it's just a request to use.
Yeah.
So, I don't want that to be used against the project as a E and A, because it's really just a A. Where the wetland, lower any recommendation given that would be, could do it to a decision.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I think that definitely still be two letters.
Okay, I just, just pointing that out.
That's the, we're talking about the same thing, maybe it's two separate letters, one addressing potential upland conservation commission jurisdictional improvements, and one wetlands. But, I'll just wait for those letters, you guys will need it from me. Does that make sense?
Uh, similar note, um, they're gonna be doing all the, you're referring around the outside edge of the fence area. Would you be doing anything to, um, help control invasive species taking over from the cleared area? I'm specifically concerned about buckthorn. Exactly what the, um, again, if I'm still a lot of degenerate, just considering there that, the growing issue in the regen, where the cleared area of the buckthorn is, um, taking over, allowing behind and other.
Yeah, very, um, Bigelow Hill Road, we had our preliminary meeting with the GANF D E S two days ago, and are putting together at their request, a invasive species management protocol to not only cover the, trying to do some good while we're in there, as in get that stuff out properly, but also prevent recurrence of more. So, that's covered, but also something that, yeah, that's covering the state stuff, but also something we should, we should actively save.
Any further discussion on John's letter? Let's start with this. Well, I believe we're kinda, oh, we're gonna wait for the recommendation from John to us, so then we can send our recommendation based off that to the select board.
I thought they were gonna discuss.
Yeah, we'll wait for the recommendation from John now.
Well, it's not our decision, so we would take the recommendation.
That's what I'm saying, we're waiting for the recommendation from them. So, you got buffer recommendation?
I guess so, but ultimately, it's gonna be you guys deciding.
Right. You can have your.
Yeah, but, yeah, you're inputting our recommendation.
Just trying to dig up the Door Street barriers.
Door Street what?
It would be barriers and waivers.
With waivers, yeah, so one would be for coverage was, what that's the east, yeah.
East is coverage.
And west would be for setbacks.
Is there an extra pack over there for Dick?
You can have mine. Oh, you should get back with it. That's what the original look like from last time. The, uh.
That's what I was guessing. Yeah, it's a little bit difficult to see in this, if I pull up like, like a digital picture and I make it a little clearer, there's another ridge in between, and it's hard to tell. This ridge?
There's not a ridge in between, that's Bigelow Hill.
I'll show you a picture, and you can decide if there's a ridge in between.
My suggestion, they mentioned that they.
Who, who produced this?
I do.
They hardly select, uh, twenty, twenty.
You can see, right, that this looks like one of those pieces of that, and there's, there's actually a, oh, there's a tree line in between the two. I don't know what it would be.
I wish you, does everybody have Google Earth, to like, put a pinpoint on a property, and then turn to Google, go to different points at that point? So, you guys just see, so there's no like, it's here, it's there.
Let's see how like, that tree line dips down.
Yes.
So, that would like, it's right here, it's actually two big. So, it possibly, because like, this is, you know, this, this array is behind that grid line? That's what I said, oh, right.
That's why, if you could go to Google Earth, do like, draw, and then go back.
See what I mean?
Can I show you the original pictures that you did in the standard?
Well, I mean, I have a similar view, but.
Well, did you take it from the end of the barriers?
This from there was, like, yeah, or from a, someone that's, you can see, oh, there's a.
Yeah, that's, you can see that for barriers right there.
Right, and then, this drops in here.
Yeah, I see that.
This still, I don't know, maybe that's the start of gap, but I don't even know.
No, that isn't gap, mom. This is directly in front of their porch. This is Bigelow Hill.
Right, this, this is, this is their barriers right there.
This is their, no, this is their tree line, the barriers are actually forward in there. This is Bigelow Hill right here. And you can see the road cuts in right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it'd be right here and down along there. You wouldn't be able to see the Dort installation on West Hill. I think that's too low, but on Bigelow Hill, you certainly would. And that's why I, I put it just to market.
How many acres of it?
This side.
How many?
Thirty-five acre array.
All right, well, we need to hold the beat up for that.
I said, we have to grab that way. So, back to, I'd go over the waiver request. If I remember correctly, the original waiver request, the one for Bigelow Hill, you drop that down to thirty-five percent. Saying that no longer applies.
And he made it smaller, is that what you said?
Yes. So, he now.
Is there evidence of that?
Yes, his new plans will have evidence. Um, so that leaves the Door Street ones. Waiver request two. And a number of complicated problems and challenges. Advocate is proposing a ground mounted solar photovoltaic installation on the property. There'll be approximately thirty-two acres of fenced area with solar energy system located. Is this?
I think that's Bigelow.
That is Bigelow.
Original Bigelow.
So, that should be page ten. This firm represents the applicant in connection with the above referenced site plan application, uh, map eleven lot five. Must be Door Street. East. Require the maximum lot coverage of thirty-five percent of lot, and ten acres or more land. The property exists with forty-two acres of land, proposed lot coverage is fifty-two percent. The applicant is proposing a ground mounted solar system on property. There will be approximately twelve point eight four acres of fenced area, which is solar energy systems located. This solar energy system is smaller from acreage within the fence, same question, similarly proposed area of Bigelow Hill. But shares the same name that the passage of five acre lots, alternate current as Bigelow Hill roadside. For reasons below, the grade of the requested waiver is appropriate for this project pursuant to article seven F six of Troy Zone Ordinance. Twelve F six of Troy Zone Ordinance. Planning board is authority today to modify any portion of regulations and the following criteria satisfy. One, conformity with proposed unnecessary hardship applicant. Two, such waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. Underneath actual law, the planning board is water latitude and grant waivers than the zoning board adjustment as in grant variances, because the unnecessary hardship standard is different for waivers under RSA chapter six seven four, colon, forty-four, than for variances under RSA chapter six seven four, colon, thirty-three. Then references. One, unnecessary hardship. Without the requested waiver, the applicant would suffer significant and unnecessary financial hardship in being required to downsize the project and move from lot coverage requirement. The property is a forty-two acre partial of vacant land that has been harvested for timber from time to time over the past decade. The proposed solar energy system is in allowed use at this location, and the site is ideally suited for a solar energy system. In building a utility scale solar energy system, applicant must produce a certain amount of energy or to make the project economically viable, and in order to cover certain fixed costs associated with destruction in the connection. As stated above, this is a smaller footprint project than the proposed Bigelow Hill road. Approximately twenty-two acres versus approximately thirty-two acres respectively. The project footprint has been downsized to the fullest extent reasonably practical, but still takes up more than thirty-five percent of partial, necessitating never. Note that the applicant is not proposing a utility scale facility on the west side of Door Street, because much less of the law has developed due to conditions of the law. The similar smaller solar energy system then proposed at Door Street East will not be economically feasible. Under these circumstances, limited lot coverage of the solar energy system to thirty-five percent has imposed an unnecessary significant financial hardship on applicant's Door Street west apartment. Two, spirit and intent on the regulation. If you have a question, you stop me just a minute. Hope my phone just went back to one. The grant and issuance of the requested waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. The solar energy system ordinance was recently amended with the town of Troy. Prior to this ordinance, there was no maximum lot coverage requirement specifically to solar energy systems. The representative of the applicant attended the public hearings and discussed the amendments to the solar energy system ordinance with town officials. During discussions, it was clear the spirit and intent of the amendment was to ensure the solar energy systems would not be too dense for any given lot. Here, the proposed project will still have over twenty acres of space, which is substantial. Furthermore, the amendment to the solar energy system ordinance allows lot coverage to gradually increase as the size of lot increases. Lots of less than two acres literally have a lot coverage of five percent. All the way up to lots of ten plus acres being allowed thirty-five percent lot coverage. In other words, the spirit and intent of the ordinance is larger the parcel, the higher percentage of lot coverage is allowed, because there will be more open space in larger parcels. As clearly stated, this site is forty-two acres, more than four times the size of the largest lot size shown in the table. Given the foregoing, the planning board's granting this waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. Additionally, it should be noted, when looked at cumulative, the total acreage of the two adjacent lots in both Door Street West and East projects are proposed is greater than eighty acres. The cumulative size of the solar array proposed is approximately twenty-eight one-half acres. This results in a lot coverage ratio of approximately thirty-five percent in line with the provisions set forth in Troy's zone ordinance. For the reasons set forth above, the applicant respectfully requests the planning board grant a waiver from provisions vertical twelve F four B of the Troy Zoning Ordinance. Applicant reserves the right to, sorry, present additional information in support of this application at public hearing. I believe that is it for Door West. Any questions on this waiver for?
I have a question. This, so the waiver request talks about financial hardships. But, there's no, there's no detail about like, the magnitude of the hardship, or, you know, comparing once, the cost of one scenario to the cost of another scenario. So, I guess I, the question is, could more information be provided to justify? Or, yeah, to support the fact that there's a financial hardship?
Sure, I mean, I can provide a number of different.
Sure, I mean, I could provide a number of different. Economic kind of feasibility plans where you have project one, project one A, one B, one C. Group one is we cover more of the parcel, and in that case, we could spread the rows more. So row, 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 right, all the modules are ready, row, row, east to west. So you can imagine the farther the rows are apart, when the sun is low, there's no what we call inter-row shading. So we've condensed things as small, as close as we possibly can. Number one, from an electrical standpoint, we can't get any closer, but we've already impacted negatively to the project from an economic standpoint. Meaning, there's less, even though the sun rays are out there, less is going to hit in the panel behind the panel behind the panel. So the overall production efficiency of Door Street East compared to Bigelow Hill Road is significantly less. We call that the specific yields, more than kilowatt hours per kilowatt is how we measure production and efficiency. So we've already gone down there. I could do a scenario where if we got bigger, we covered more. There'd be more kilowatt hours produced every day, and those kilowatt hours are sold for dollars and cents. And so that's kind of one way I could show. The other is a fixed cost infrastructure question. We could look at the general cost of the air connector project and some of the upgrades I'm expecting at the substation. I have to pay those upgrades, whether it's, you know, a hundred kilowatts or a thousand kilowatts or five thousand kilowatts. That's a fixed cost, and so distributing that fixed cost over a smaller project is an economic hardship compared to a larger project. So if I was to reduce to a thirty-five percent coverage from the forty-something that we're at, that's even more dollars per panel, if you want to think of it that way, that I have to cover. And our lot coverage that we're using right now is basically about as tight as we can make it. Third way to look at it is economic feasibility for the landowner, because we're paying per acre per year. So once you get below a certain amount, it's not worth the hassle of having a tenant. So that's another thing we talked about. I haven't done that map and shown the alternatives analysis, but I think you can imagine the smaller you get, the harder it is to carry the fixed costs. Door Street worked is another one that kind of has come up recently that wasn't really in my scope. So imagine the same equipment has to build a one megawatt project, it's a five megawatt project. That equipment is just as likely to damage a road as.
For one megawatts, it is for fifty megawatts.
Sure, or whatever it is. It's the same equipment that mobilizes and demobilizes. That's more risk and potential fixed costs a small project has to carry. So that's where I'm trying to make the largest project I can build while balancing the minimum negative impact to the environmental site, to the bylaw, to the neighbors. And this was a site where a zone industrial, without any neighbors, without any buyers, really with a road carrying almost all municipal traffic. It felt like a very decent response.
Door Street.
Okay, so your initial response was yes, there's a lot of ways that could be quantified. And I mean, I think as it's written now, it says, you know, it uses the phrase like certain fixed costs, but you just described a lot of specific things that aren't, I didn't see in the request. So I, I guess I feel less sure we need to see like dollars explaining those things. But do other board members feel like we should have justification for the financial, significant financial hardship? In addition to what you just explained?
That's why you said. That's why you said that's not.
Yeah, I don't think you made anything up there also, very reasonable.
I'd say just the fixed costs of a construction project, whether it's a building or a solar array or home or a parking lot. There's certain variable costs that as I get smaller, I don't have to pay for the extra modules, but the fixed costs are material. And that would be where I'd focus. If you ask me to provide a breakdown, I'd talk about utilization costs, I'd talk about project management costs, I'd talk about interconnection costs, I'd talk about site prep costs, I'd talk about cleaning costs, et cetera, et cetera. So that's where I would go with it, if you would like to see.
I had a question. If we had more detailed, we could definitely change. I have to give my. Not for, I don't see Door Street, you know, a cost now, it's just going to change really how we do it. He's right, if you did one acres or forty acres, it still has to, assuming not, it goes to less, it would cost you a few thousand. So we can imagine going over to ten thousand instead of having forty acres. Now, in this case, I don't think we need a specific cost, I think we need a description. The only question we, you did say the results of the lot coverage ratio of joining the two lots together as one is approximately thirty-five percent?
It's forty point three.
Forty point three. So it is touchy.
But you might check my math, but I got forty point three.
Forty point three was the lot coverage.
If you were to, let's say we combined Door Street East and West, both acreage and coverage wise, it'd come out to forty point.
So close, but still real high.
Yeah, so basically we're over on coverage from east, we're within setbacks on the last number over in total. Oh, I have used.
What's the, what's the acreage, the total?
The total acreage between two properties is eighty. I may have used the clear area.
I wouldn't say approximately.
I used the clear area over the solar array.
Thirty-five point six. Yeah. Forty-two acre parcel of Door East, thirty-eight acre parcel of Door West, or eighty total acres. Divided by twenty-two acres within the fence for Door East and six point five acres within the fence for Door West is a lot coverage ratio of thirty-five point six percent.
Right, I did the twenty-three and the nine and quarter of clear area.
There's too many numbers to. I was hoping I should say, I was hoping I didn't write approximately.
I suppose there is.
Well, it does say ratio of approximately thirty-five percent. About thirty-five percent.
But I would agree, approximately thirty-five, it's not forty.
You have any thoughts on the waiver, Kyle?
Hey, I mean, really, it's up to you all to decide whether or not the, the evidence presented is reasonable. And I mean, if you think that it is, you certainly are within your rights to, to accept it.
I think in this case, it does meet the intent to have the two adjacent lots in the same area. So if we're concerned about the coverage, we're concerned about the wildlife, we're concerned about keeping open space, it does, it does do that. Under any condition, would you just build one and not build the other?
I think the argument would only get better.
No, I'm assuming, I probably didn't phrase that right. If you wouldn't build the one that you get the big label on and then not build the one that only has, I mean, eight. In other words, you'd always combine the two, always build the two.
I think the answer would be there, there is a scenario where I only build one project, it's unlikely, but these projects are mechanically, electrically entitled with wise, all separate and apart, that if I were to not build the smaller project, that thirty-five percent would go high, would go down.
Sure.
So there would be even more unprotected space, unimpacted space.
I guess what I'm saying though, is that in order to make it work so that's thirty-five percent, you need both projects.
If you want to consider them adjacent.
I would say the other way around. In order for me to build the smaller Door West project, I mean its bigger brother, Door East. There's a, the slight scenario would be, ever source says, hey Zach, you can only do one project. Pick it. I would pick the bigger one, Door East. In that case, I wouldn't build Door West. But my response again is my spirit of the bylaw argument, if you will, at one of them is that the total acreage owned by my landowners is eighty acres and not forty-two and thirty-eight. And so if I didn't build the six and a half acre project, my lot coverage ratio of the eighty acres would be now thirty percent. So I should improve the argument.
Yeah, I was thinking back.
Yeah. The, the other side of the spirit of the bylaw that we were focused on, if I recall from the bylaw meetings in November, December, was kind of setbacks or lot lines and protection for local residents in the scenario where landowner X owned a hundred acres surrounded by a residential development. So that was another one that I thought was, was pertinent to the spirit of the bylaw in that there weren't residents that were going to be impacted by this.
I have so much waiver.
We use the same coverage figures by, regardless of district, right?
Yes.
So.
The Solar Ordinance had it by acreage, not by district.
Yeah.
Which had the lot coverage.
When we discussed that, the goal was to just never have a piece of property that was closing.
Right. Yeah. So, I mean, to me, to me, I think the request is reasonable. Maybe that being the biggest, or the zones, like being the biggest justification, the land use. The fact that you're in industrial uses that are with no, you know, neighbors right next door.
There's no residential impact.
Yeah.
Well, you're backed up, just, just to be clear, you're backed up to a house on Door Street. There, there is a residence on Door Street that goes behind, and there's also, it doesn't come very close, but there's a resident on Bigelow Hill that provides. It's not completely case with, you know, industrial use.
And I think that was the argument you guys brought up when I originally wanted different coverage per zone because zones eventually end.
Each waiver can be, says a motion, eventually, we don't have to do them all together.
Kyle, I'll, I'll move that the planning board approve the waiver requested for Door West.
For lot.
The lot coverage requirement.
Second. Second acreage. Any discussion?
I'll just, yeah, this will be the proper time of discussion. So I just feel that as though, although they are considered one property, they're, they're not. Like, like you said, we, you know, we're not still adjusting something. I think Door Street is actually right away, I don't know if it's an actual.
Door Street is real.
No, but I think the lot line is down the middle of Door Street, I don't know directly.
They, we sorted that out years ago. Yeah, that's a, that's a run. So if it was, if you were, if you were looking at these properties. If you had a five acre lot on one side with a seven acre lot on the other, you could combine them, you'd have twelve acres for areas.
So I don't know, I, I don't know how, well.
I can't, knowing that neighborhood, and this really stabilizes, you now know what's going to be there this for fifty years or thirty years. It seems like the highest, almost highest and best use down there. Yeah, it's, it's something in there.
Yeah, I, I get concerned when, when we put the town says, let's just get something. It's not always the best option. That's, yeah, just my feeling.
And we're discussing the waiver right now.
For the spot, right?
Not the application.
But I mean, yeah, I, I'm kind of separating the two parcels even though I think the dog is considering that as one, there's a road through the middle of it. This one, the bus, it's a residential property, has the biggest coverage.
Any other discussion? Do you agree with the vote motion? All those in favor of the motion to approve the waiver for lot coverage on Door West?
East.
Oh, sorry, east, sorry, east.
One lot at a time? Are you doing it one lot at a time?
One waiver at a time.
One waiver at a time. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next things? Maze? Who are you?
That was in favor. The second was in motion.
You can still vote now.
I, yes, I know. Yeah, you're basically holding it up, right? Yeah, yeah.
So on to the next waiver.
Sorry, that was five to one. Was that an A or?
Oh, yeah, it was an A, yeah.
No abstentions. Waiver. I'm sure the loser's. Map nineteen lot seventy-one, the property. This is the name of it. This must be for Door West. This firm represents the applicant in connection with above referenced site plan application for commercial ground mounted solar energy system with approximately six point one three acres of fenced area which the solar energy system is located. As referenced in the application, the applicant respectfully requests the waiver from Article twelve F four D of Troy's Zone Ordinance. Require every security barrier to be setback a minimum of a hundred feet from lot property lines and all equipment to be setback a minimum of ten feet within the security barrier. The security fence along the northwestern property line, approximately five hundred and fifty feet, will be set back five feet from that property line. The balance of the security fence will supply within a hundred foot minimum setback. If the waiver is granted to the fence at this location, then equipment will be set back greater than the required minimum of ten feet from the fence and approximately fifty feet from the northwestern property line. This request is being made to locate the security fence to minimize impacts to natural resources on the site, including wetlands and streams. A reason explained below, the granted requested waiver is appropriate for this project. Pursuant to Article twelve F six of Troy's Zone Ordinance, planning board's story, waiver modifying enforcement regulations, the following criteria satisfy. One, conformity with proposed unnecessary hardship applicant. Two, such waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. One, unnecessary hardship. Without the requested waiver, the applicant would suffer significant unnecessary hardship. Property is a thirty acre parcel of vacant land that has been harvested for timber from time to time over the past decade. Proceded solar energy system is an allowed, I'm sorry, used to this. Whole solar energy system is not allowed, I'm sorry, used at this location. The site is well suited for solar energy systems. However, the property, which makes traditional middle of the property site layout of the solar energy system impractical without significant environmental impacts associated with mitigation costs. As shown in the submission materials for the project, the applicant undertook a significant amount of environmental study to determine the best possible location for solar energy system on this site to minimize environmental impacts. The project removed into the wetlands area in the middle of the property, the cost and length of permit and regulatory review will be significantly increased with no guarantee of eventual success. Under these circumstances, the required compliance of a hundred foot setback will pose unnecessary hardship, undue financial burden, and unreasonable regulatory risk on applicant and will also result in unnecessary environmental impacts. Number two, spirit and intent of the regulations. The issuance of the requested waiver will not be contrary to spirit and intent of regulations. The spirit and intent of regular of the hundred foot setback in this context makes sure that solar energy systems are not built too close to the abandoned property line or right away so as to negatively, so as to negatively impact adjacent properties and streets. As stated above, the fence is situated five feet from the abandoned property line along the northwestern property lines and the near solar panel will be approximately fifty feet away from the property. Sorry everyone, screen. The access road to the site will be located between the fence and the northwest property line. Furthermore, the neighboring property is not used as residential use but rather as a pet cemetery and crematorium. The solar energy system will be ground mounted and no more fifteen feet tall. Given the current use of the neighboring property, it is our opinion that solar energy system will present no negative impacts to the property. This is clearly consistent with the overall intent of the setback department. Again, in the form of, the planning board grant of this waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent regulations. For the reasons set forth above, applicant respectfully requests the planning board grant a waiver under provisions of Article twelve F four D of Detroit Zone Ordinance. Applicant loses right to use additional information to support this application. I did have one or two questions. Let's get time right. So, fence will be ten feet.
Five feet.
Five feet off property line, but then it says here the access road to the site will be located between the fence line and the northwest property line. So you got a five foot access road. Doesn't seem.
The fence is, the, the road is between the fence and the array. The road is within the fence.
Okay, okay. And number two, spirit and intent of the regulations, the access road to the site will be located between the fence and the northwest property. That kind of makes it sound.
Sorry, that certainly would have sounded, but that must be a lawyer describing plans, but the, uh, the road is inside.
The road is inside, that's right. So I thought, I was like, that's a really narrow road.
Yep.
Five feet.
Made it so the bicycle.
And the array, distance of fifty feet is based off of property line, not the fence line.
Yes.
Any other questions? Basic understanding is you're just trying to avoid the wetlands and you just move it all.
Just get off touch. I opened up this image up so you can see the, uh, the upper branch of the show here, that's true, that's true. A lot of draining down here with wetlands in the area. There's one plan that we have that's open right here that shows the wetlands. They're not shown here. But there's a wetland perimeter here that we walked up to.
That was the one we walked up to, right?
That's what we walked up to the edge. There's a significant topographical drop down into this culvert that ties into the road and drains down. Um, and so if we were to follow the setbacks, we'd be doing, you know, we talk about the financial hardship, one significant topographical impact. Wetland impact, if approved by New Hampshire DES, comes with a mitigation fee. That's a mitigation fee, large dollar number per square foot of impact. So every shovel I put in a wetland, I pay for it and that would be significant impact. So exactly, instead of pushing the site down into the wetlands, we pulled it up and kept it on the, on the upland that came in a conflict with the northwest property line of the crematorium property.
So what are your design options with all the, with the regular setback?
Pushing the whole site south, southeast or removing the whole edge of the array here, pushing the fence down to fifty feet where we lose a big swath of modules in here.
Do you know approximately how much that shrinks the rip?
It would shrink the array. It's about a little over six acres right now. I think it's at six point one five. So we're probably looking at it about two acres, maybe a third, thirty percentish of the way. There are more wetlands up here in this area, which is why we didn't need a thin C shaped or U shaped array. We need a lot that would be. From an engineering design standpoint, not very practical, but if we simply followed only the uplands, we'd have done a crescent shaped project. But the reason we're avoiding it here is there's a lot more wetlands up in this area. The original plan was more of a square shaped project up here, but we got a lot of, um, a lot of wetlands that showed up during our walk that were not mapped by GIS. So we lost this area. There's a significant wetland body that comes around here and this area, the upland right here was a little bit too small for us to consider for the project. So this was the development area.
Any other questions?
So what's on that pad site? Is that, um?
That's the inverter and the transformer. That's outside of it.
You have a motion on the court.
How motion?
Is it a corporate front of motion or a court, a motion?
I'm fine with it.
That I would move that we, uh, approve the request for a, what do we call it in this?
Waiver.
Waiver. As proposed, uh, uh, it's Door, Door Street West.
Second.
Can I speak to that motion?
Yes.
If you look at this plan and you keep in mind the idea of the wetlands and preserving as much of the natural environment as you can disturbing, I mean, the intent is to disturb as little as possible. And I think, given that he could move it into the wetlands and conform with our, our setback requirement, I think this is a far better op- option for the, for the environment in the natural sense, but also in the environment for the local human sense. The, this crematorium is unlikely to expand. It's, it's not like you're going to have this part up against, you know, a schoolyard or townhouses or somebody's house. So in that sense, I think you really still have a very good buffer between his property line and the crematorium, uh, which is probably the size of this room. And, and again, I, I, I think that it, it is better to leave the, the water bodies where they are naturally than to fiddle with them. I'd much have to go one to one and a half exchange or something. If I take out one acre, I put in one and a half or something like that.
Along with the feed and move.
And every, every other, right.
Exactly.
So, you know, and, or you can just leave it the way it is, which seems like, to make it move it so that we can live with an artificially constructive lot line setback, which doesn't really apply in this situation, I think would be unnecessary.
Further discussion on the motion we do? I think, uh, my concern with it is, is the, it kind of depends on the current use of the owner's line and that could change over time. So I would, I would think we, we have to respect the fact that that lot may change its use over time and that we can keep that, um, that, that, uh, set term as it's.
Well, but what is it going to change? It's still an industrial property. And so that, that new developer of whatever that is, future user of crematorium, uh, you know, what is he, what is that going to be? And that's going to have to come into review if it's something significant. So you still have the opportunity to leave, make the, the buffer requirement. To leave the green buffer with the waiver.
On, on, on the.
Their side.
Their side, sure, sure. Um, I think also the consequence, the financial hardship in this case, still has the ability to scale it back a little bit. His percentage combined with two lots is not, not that different. So I would, I would still go with, uh, we keep it.
Yeah, not only, not only is the fence within setbacks, the road and would appear to be the path with the transformer and all that is all within.
But fences are allowed within, they don't fall in all the setbacks of structures.
I think that's the problem they definitely do in this case.
Okay.
I thought they, they only have to be one foot from the property line.
General labor.
Right, and then the full water. Solar.
Solar. Their idea was to keep a solar ray for that construction far enough off the property line.
Yeah.
Where you drive a kitchen table.
Yeah.
It wasn't five feet.
Yeah, but there are, in this case, there are no kitchen.
There are no kitchen, but that was the idea behind the solar, or it sends its own fence setbacks or project setbacks.
Positive thing for you guys, it's on the north side of the property. So if they decide to build a skyscraper there, then it doesn't affect your array.
It might get some bounce back.
But yeah, it, it's a little tight for my liking in the respect of the.
So, does no solar ordinance or the first array has to be ten feet from the fence line?
Whatever, all of them not to be setback, minimum of ten feet, beginning with the area they were.
So could he move that fence in, fifty feet off property line, five feet, so it's forty-five? Could you move it into ten feet off that? Would you be getting one, twenty-five, thirty? So it'd be a little better.
I mean, I, you could ideally move it to the other side of the road and have your access road open up to that, but.
Uh, I don't know if that would move the road.
Will you roll this?
No, that's a good question.
Does it necessarily need to be inside, like, your access road?
It does not need to be, but we're just working with a space constrained site, so the road without setback means, means the road itself is not only satisfying like any other needs, but also the ten foot or, ten feet is probably not right. Fifteen feet is the general code standard. Anything inside, if the panel gets closer than fifteen feet from the fence, I have to round the fence. And so that's where fifteen feet is usually the number. But in this case, we would have lot line, setback, road, setback, fence, setback, solar module. And so if I put the road inside the fence, that's where I get the road serving, like I said, multiple functions for me in the project. It's the most efficient use of space in a space constrained site.
Realistically, you know, you know, move the road closer, access road closer to the property line, then that's still going to be basically the same. Back to Tanya and Berta, I guess you'll have that sort of part of their budget. Road, it's going to be the same.
Cause both are clear parcels. Anything inside the fence, two modules would be terrible. It's a shame. The fence leaves in, the road goes out, the roads are upstairs, they have to drive.
I, I think in this case, like, we should be more flexible, um, especially when you consider the land use, you know, the future land use being light industrial. We should be picturing, okay, there's a warehouse next door. Are, you know, are they, what's their tax or?
Oh, there's a crematorium right there.
Ooh, let's see. It's gotta be fifteen years, probably twenty.
So it's, it's another thing, like, they can be going strong for the, like, the lease as far as we know. But I, I think there's a, there's, it's, the setback should be probably considered district by district in our regulation.
Probably sure, yeah.
I don't think.
Cause really, the reason we came up with that was because if you put one next to a house lot, you want to make sure there's a vegetation buffer.
Right. And that's not, that is not an issue here. It's.
What is the effective setback to what you have a design?
To what? Fence, five feet. Five feet to the fence and then, uh, five twenty, seven ten. So it's about forty-five. Five feet to the modules and that way.
Your, your modules are fifty feet from the property line.
Approximately, that's an approximate estimate. Five feet off the property line to the fence, about twenty feet from the road and surely with the setback. Obviously, it's the corner.
Yeah.
We have no communication from the, from the law.
Van, he isn't going to, yeah. He's, uh, I was trying to think how old he is, just. He wouldn't, if you met him, you'd think he was fifteen years younger than he is, but he's, can't be younger than seventy-nine or eighty. He used to work for that side. Probably about over twenty years, cause twenty years ago was two thousand and four. And I think he bought that property before that. Time flies.
Do you look at where it used to be?
That, that's a pet, that's a pet crematorium.
Yes, and there used to be one on the corner.
No, that's a human crematorium.
Oh, you're kidding.
No, no, we have two in town. One is human, one's pet. There's two crematoriums in town.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I didn't know that was a crematorium.
Oh, yeah, no.
It was a pet crematorium. I'm going to go with that again.
They, they, they have customers who are dying to get in there every day.
Well, I guess we'll have to go from here and get cremated.
No, well, they take you up the key and then they bring it back to Troy. That's actually what happens.
It's been weird, like, your mail goes in town, it goes out.
Right.
Town first.
It goes back, yeah.
I handed it in my hand on the town.
We did discuss the, yeah, we did discuss the, the vegetative buffer that's required by light industrial district as well. Twenty foot vegetation buffer that's required.
Is that, that's part of the waiver request? Is that what you're saying?
I.
No, it's not part of the waiver request, but he says part of the light industrial.
Well, I, I would say it's part of it in a sense that if we approve it or, or waive any vote.
Is that for, could you give me if H M, or it's page eleven under the law, the article requirements on the light industrial district and, um, R B, second paragraph of Article two, I guess. two, I guess?
Yep.
So, that's where...
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
The first section, that's right.
Where the bus will build residential roads. This call's been always off my call. Yeah, wherever the bus, a, a different district.
Interestingly, we, in the light industrial district, we allow more coverage of buildings and structures than we do solar.
Yeah, amount of lot coverage consisting of all buildings, structures, apartment list shall be no more than fifty percent of total water.
It's a merit from my attorney, but I've got it up for this. That would have been a great scare of the argument.
That was a good point, good comment. So, I guess...
I'm good.
You're, you're good on that?
Oh, yeah.
Any further discussion on it? Do you feel we're ready to vote?
Yes.
So, the motion is to approve the waiver to remove the fence line within five feet of the property line, therefore going inside the roof with setback. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opinions?
Aye.
Motion passes. Any other waivers?
No.
Yes, there is, I think, the, the waiver, um, for, for B, you have the entry point from the approved class five, so you still need to grant that waiver, even though all the details of what that's going to imply, as we discussed earlier, will select.
Okay, yep. Waiver request one. All right, so, in fact, this is for safety application for solar system, map nine, lot one, which is Bigelow Hill. Waiver request one. Most of Bigelow Hill roads are classed five right away, however, approximately twelve-hundred millimeter foot portion of Bigelow Hill road classifies as class six right away, exists between the proposed side area and the ending of the class five right away portion of Bigelow Hill road. Advocate is proposing ground mount solar system on property. There'll be approximately thirty-two acres of fence there, which solar system is located. Reason explained below, granted the requested waiver is appropriate for the project. One, conforming with proposed Minnesota harsh advocate, two such waivers will not be contrary to spirit and intent of regulations.
You don't need to read, I think the rest is the same text as all the other ones.
Yeah. Those things in detail is... Let's say that advocate will maintain where necessary approved length of roadway to extend necessary as an expense. Well, so, I'm not really able to just... Need for class five or better right away does not exist with proposed use of property. Unlike more traditional residential commercial developments, there will be no use of or access to the project by the general public, so there will be no need for true public activity. Project will not be staffed and will generate the minimum use of traffic, limiting it to periodic, periodic inspection maintenance after project construction from the current state of Bigelow Hill allows for such use. Advocate will maintain awareness and approve this length of roadway to extend as necessary as whole expense, and release the town authority responsibility and liability related, therefore, to such improved maintenance to be normalized in the road maintenance agreement with the town Troy prior to the commencement of construction. Would that be about the saltwater deal, right?
So, that was the agreement I was referring to, that John and I had worked on.
Sir, Dick, yeah, Dick, you, this was the first part of the planning board meeting, was discussing improving the class six portion to get to this property, and I think the outcome was...
I read, I read John's.
Oh, okay, read, yeah, and the outcome, or Carol pointed out, this is not like a planning board decision, it's something that the board's selectmen needs to address.
Yeah, does the hammerhead at the end of this, on Bigelow Hill?
This was the proposal, yes.
Well, and I wanted, so, when I read that, my question was, uh, and you're, you've arranged, you've designed that hammerhead to fit within the, uh, existing Bigelow Hill right away?
Yeah, so, you can see the hammerhead, actually, simply going past by...
Got it.
Our gate is five hundred.
All right, so it's not, it's not, it's not that way?
Yeah, it's simply utilizing access to driveway.
As a, as a, okay. Well, your future existing right.
First, I'm sure where we discussed was, his engineer, John, would sit down and discuss what they want. He'd give a recommendation to us, and we'd let you guys know, and you'd have the final vote set, which is recognition. So, is this a waiver to you not upgrade the road?
No, it's a waiver specific to the, to the written bylaw, deferring responsibility to the board's selectmen on whether or not they want to accept the road as class five or better.
Do you need a class five road?
That's the whole point. We don't.
Right.
We simply need to approve the road.
We need to approve the road.
And so, the original proposal was that we would approve the road to our mental respect, but ultimately, or effectively, we're changing it, that we're agreeing to approve the road in Jordan's spectrum.
Which is a class five, how we just discussed this already?
Suspect specification of design.
Well, class six road is subject to gates and bars, and the RSAs on the, as you may or may not be aware, put the burden of maintenance on the owners.
That's right.
So...
That's why I was, I, I guess there's, I don't know if I can explain it better than that, there's pros and cons, if you guys have to...
Well, and I, I'm aware of the pros and, you don't need to regurgitate, redo all these for me, I'm very vague, but pros and cons of whether making it class five, and then we can qualify for highway block grant money.
Exactly.
We leave it as it is, and we don't have to deal with it, and a thousand other leadership.
Hence, my request for the waiver to give the town autonomy to decide what they want to do with it, but I will still put a bill to upgrade it in respect of the waiver.
Well, of course, we're working between you, John, and...
Yeah, we agreed that, uh, if you can get a hold of it, like, there, so I can go up there and walk it.
Yeah.
But it's not brought up to set on a class five spec, and it's still a class six road, is that right? It's not brought up to class five spec, and it's still a class six road.
No, no, no.
That hasn't changed.
All right, let me answer the question.
I'm listening.
Class six road could be in class fives condition, and a class five road could be in class six condition, and we have examples of that in different work. Class five and class six have to do with who's doing the maintenance, not the condition of the road.
And whether you can spend public money to maintain them or not. You cannot, and a class six...
But our class six road, they're not allowed to build on a class six road.
That's not true.
I've been told this for twenty-five years.
Well, whoever told you those exact words was incorrect. This town, by choice, has refrained from issuing building permits on class for six roads for several decades. It is legal and permissible to issue building permits on class six roads. Several of our neighboring towns do. Some of the towns ask for waivers for public services, which are probably enforceable, some of them do not. This town has for some time not issued a building permit on class six road. We could, and would...
So, it sounded like you would.
I didn't say I would or wouldn't, I'm just saying, the question is, can you, and the answer is yes. And the typical request is for residential purposes, and that is the principal concern with building...
So, if I bought this defense's property tomorrow, and I wanted to put a house where he's putting his solar array, would I be able to?
You would have to make, you could come to, it is entirely up to the selectmen. My, if you want my opinion, the answer would be no.
Uh-huh, why?
Because we have a deep, a binding concern about building residential properties without adequate access to public services, such as fire and police protection.
Well, he's putting a solar array, that could be also a risk.
The, I, the correct place for your argument, if you want to have that argument, isn't about that, is with, when we reconvene as a selectman to hear this.
Any further discussion on the question of the waiver, regarding the motion?
I, I move that we approve, that we approve the request for a waiver submitted.
Could you modify your request to make it specific to waiver number one?
To waiver number one.
With John, waiver number two, which was the lot coverage that we're designing.
Second, second, second. Any discussion on this waiver one? I don't think I have any discussion on it.
Of course, that's actually...
I need a discussion, I should...
So, when, I mean, one thing about waivers, I mean, one thing for me is the absolute distance of the road, you know, I think the board should feel differently if the property is like a mile or two down the classics road versus, you know, this is in walking distance.
Walking distance, and they're gonna be fixing up the road too there.
Yeah, I think that's really important.
The fire safety aspect, I believe, is covered, is the main concern.
Yeah.
The odds of having them there are minimal for people, because they should be going on site once construction's done. Dark construction is probably a concern.
Now, often doesn't make that person go on this project monthly, every six months?
Somewhere between every quarter, every half a year, so probably every four months might be a good option, a good number to think about. Maintenance is in two categories, one is operations and maintenance, mowing, cleaning, et cetera. The other is response to a lightning strike or a stream that's out or an inverter or something like that, so I would say the average would be four or five times a year.
So, the biggest impact people are gonna be there is dark construction?
Absolutely, yeah, deconstruction, I guess.
Deconstruction will be like thirty years? That would fill up the Mexican border.
But it's bonded, but it's bonded, I can't use that argument.
We're not allowed to become Mexican.
Do we have a second on that?
Yes, we have a second, so we're kind of in discussion now.
I think this one's maybe straightforward.
Yeah.
Something I think is kind of a risk, or a liability is improving that road, especially because of the stream crossing, I think that, like, I'm not, I'm not sure we could just, you know, drop, drop a pipe in the existing thing, I think it's, I'm concerned about the cost.
I think that's gonna align with, they give us for an answer.
Yeah.
It'll also be part of our scope with the Hampshire V E S, and I can't judge that wetland without their permit, so, again, the point of coming to you all first is to define a plan and a scope that you all approve, and that plan goes to the state. And so, if I was saying no improvement on the road, this would change my plan with the state, right? But I do have to permit any shovel that goes into a wetland or a stream area, so in this case, we avoided it completely with the solar project, but now there will be some scope, or with respect to the road, there will be some scope. And in a scenario where we didn't touch the culvert at all, that might change, but I think we're agreeing that in that respect, there's gonna be a, a little bit of that color.
I don't think the waiver would really affect, but that's gonna be all determined by what specs we need.
That's right.
Yeah.
This waiver doesn't release what we asked to do at the end.
You're not approving the front of the road.
Right.
You're saying, I don't have to tie it, I don't have to upgrade, I don't have to get the road accepted by the board's selectmen as class five.
So, quick question, just, I'm sorry, let me just say to that, because he, he figures the waiver doesn't have to be town accepted as class five, but that means you don't have to, that means it's still not open to residents to build houses on the section.
Correct.
But if town adopted it as class five, any neighborhood or parcel on the other side that approved section, could the residential build it, could they not?
Uh, yeah, there's only one, I think, but there could, there could be a subdivision now, or...
So, if the town were to make that a class five, you are opening up the chance to do residential development on the other side of the finished portion.
Yeah.
So, that'd be my one argument of...
Well, if it's to go, to be, make it a class five road, you have to go down a bit, you have to have, so, you definitely...
Well, I'm just saying, that'd be my one reason to grant the waiver, so we don't open up that people...
Well, the town will adopt it, it just, he doesn't, but, well, in this case, it doesn't have to be a...
That's where we might want to write to the select board, and be like, here are the pros, some of the pros and cons we see of actually adopting it.
I just didn't want the burden of adopting it or not to be on the solar project, or to defer it to the town, that was the whole purpose of the waiver.
Any further discussion, or we feel we should move to vote? For your total. All those in favor of the motion on waiver one on Bigelow Hill?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opinions? Waiver one passes? And I believe the only waiver that would have been left would be waiver two, which you take care of, adjusting the size of the one on the side. Oh, boy, I just did that screen. Do we have to put in, because we have these waivers that gave us some of those, of the files, we have time to go, the paper that says that waiver two was removed?
It'll be in the findings section of the conditional use permit.
Okay, I'm just trying to remember how that went in, if it was us or is them, so it'd be in the findings under that.
Yes.
That waiver two was withdrawn due to a lot of line adjustment of the size of the
Typically, the conditional use permit will have a description of the project, a list of all the final materials, drawings, dates, et cetera, findings that show the proceeds, the requirements of the bylaw, or waivers where it doesn't, and then special conditions for the project that are not project specific. And then special conditions for the project that are not project specific.
Good. That's all the waivers.
This hundred and fifty foot setback is just applicable to larger rays. We have.
Yes, so in the solar, in the solar order itself, it says hundred feet from a, oh, property lines. Seventy-five feet off right away, so well done.
But what if you want the solar panel on your house?
This is for.
Not the walls of your house, just.
Groundhouse.
No wall there.
These are for groundhogs.
Yeah. This is only for groundhogs.
Yeah, I think we allow full roof coverage or whatever.
So if you went to. General stands for commercial and utility scale solar systems.
Yeah.
So not residential.
Okay.
So that's where that comes in. So this system is like one supplying power.
Right, like these guys.
And that, that has that hundred foot above a property line, seventy-five feet off the Class V or better right away. We did that, so in theory, if you built, let's say there was a house where the crematorium was.
Right.
You could create a mitigation bucket a hundred feet from it and still have it. In this case, there's not a house there, so yes, the waiver. Did, um, did fire send this a letter yet?
Nope. Um, I did send all the materials to Highway Fire and PD. Um, and I explained. Henry kind of gave me a good outline on what you guys were expecting. I think I, yeah, I guess he's.
Anything else we need to comment on this? I think at this point, we just made.
I had some, I had some follow-up questions, maybe that bit from Zach being here. One is building within floodplains. So I think this is, just applies to Door West. And on the map, the floodplain seems to be delineated. Some page C one or two along this line. And it's, it's, it looks like all of the, at least the permanent improvements, like the panels, would be just beyond that, but I just wanted to make sure I was reading that right.
That's right. Use the floodplain line as a firm line. There's no setback associated with buffers to FIBA lines. And basically, we're doing it for our insurance companies. As long as it's, you know, it's a definitive line, if you're inside the line, qualified for cover checks. If you're in the floodplain, you have to pay more money. Or in some cases, when you do build a solar floodplain, you lift the panels up even more. So like, no permanent improvements within the floodplain.
Okay. We, the town has like a local floodplain process, and I just wanted to make, get it on the record, so to speak.
Some properties, it's confusing, but for Door West, there's a significant topographical drop to the river.
Okay. Oh, in the, in the last minutes, there was mention of reaching out to the public health officer, or I know he had asked some particular information to be shared.
He was copied, he was copied via email on the supplemental information letter dated seven twenty-three. And provided one extensive article by the University of North Carolina or North Carolina State when they, that state was first investigating solar, just on the health effects of solar. And the latter of, that was provided two industry campaigns of, called MQs, commonly asked questions.
Okay.
So that was all completed, Mr. Willie said, point one, to Carol.
And Mr. Willie didn't respond to you, and I don't think he wrote us, I don't think he wrote, like, I, did we?
Did you get that letter? You got some kind of two letter? I don't remember seeing that.
No, I haven't.
The email.
Isn't he the assistant health officer?
Yes.
Yeah.
If you happen to be there.
I'd be forward. He came with the last one we had.
Yeah, I, I researched all the things that were discussed in the very first meeting. It was really, you know. The fire hazard risk is like less than three tenths of a percent worldwide, non-geopolitically. Health hazards are, you know, like we said here, Roundup was considered healthy twenty years ago, right? So no, no long-term things, but property values. I think someone had told our number thirty percent, and what I could find is about three percent if you were adjacent to one, what may be affected by that.
Yeah, we subjected.
Maybe in a new situation, that changes, I don't know. But, um, there was talk about like fluids being, I don't believe there's any fluids in keys at all. And some EMF stuff in that, but nothing really. Like, I did find an article on that one point two mile setback, but that was, it was old and it was kind of vague and really.
You know, the concern about EMFs. I, I had a, I've been Virginia many years ago, I went through this, this developing project. And they had high tension lines that ran this.
Right.
And so the EMF fields around the toaster on your kitchen counter is several multiples of what you're looking at from.
Yeah.
High tension lines, and this is even less.
And every EMF article was strictly talking about high tension line.
Right.
If I'm asking the right word.
Yeah.
The lines, yeah.
But your toast, the, the real point is, your toaster and your kitchen counter has much bigger, in that.
This is the worst.
Sure, there you go. You're putting that up like a bridge, aren't they?
Yeah, falsely with an empty chest.
You just jump on things.
Yeah, everything I remember is this is worse.
Yeah.
Please say you're aware of the class, but you have CTS running at your house.
Right. That was all.
No, I don't, did they run out any questions? Were you excited what they thought of? Anyone's here? I think, I think the sidewalk, really, thank you for giving that, because I've been waiting here. But you see, I don't know. We're getting lots of properties, and it's good to see many twos, half red, the road conditions.
So I think people will have a question about, and I don't think this is, this is accurate. I think it's too big and too low. But people will have questions about the visibility of it. Is there anything that you can do? Like, I went to the cemetery, I did a bearing, I did a little hill. It's a bit hard to see what elevation is, but you kind of guess. Is there any way to put on a map the perspective on that?
I mean, that, what might, is.
When we did the Google Earth, well, when we did the walk, he has a Google Earth, and you can align.
You can draw a line from various places to Mammoth, and it was like.
And it's, it's down into the right, and I know, and this picture's great, and I'm not arguing it at all, but there's another ridge in that photo that you can't see because it's pretty dark. I don't know, it looks like a shadow.
Well, I, I, I mean, I, I did go, I, I got the bearing, I went to the blueberry farm. It, it's there, and where you can really see it is if you go to the cemetery. Big old. I, I don't think it's gonna be big, you know, it's about three miles from the blueberry farm. So it's gonna be a relatively small.
Color should draw.
I think you, oh, it's not gonna be like that, no, that's for sure. Uh, but it'd be nice to just have something like that, but that can happen.
It's gonna be like looking at Pulpalooa in the cemetery.
Yes.
Your heart.
Well, I mean, yeah, and, and in all reality, anything you get built there, you'd see it from a rough.
Yeah, it'd just be good to have something to, to display what a park somebody is. I don't, I agree. You know, I think it's gonna be about that big, right? It's, yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be right at the hump, it's about, maybe about an inch.
That's why they make photo jobs.
Yeah, I think it's hard, though. I mean, how do you know for sure? Like, I can get the bearing, I know where it is, I don't, I can't easily get the elevation.
Unless you send somebody out there with a mirror or something.
Well, that's, so, so I don't think you could do Google Earth and set a pin, and then move across Google Earth, and then look at your pin.
I don't know Google Earth super well, but I know there's a topographical feature.
We've already got the KMC files in. I can try to put the little yellow person on the blueberry farm and look at the KMC.
But I think, I think where the biggest view of it's gonna be is from the cemetery. So that's, yeah.
The one up through twelve.
Yes.
So right here, right here, if you guys wanna look, I got a piece of paper. So this is the blueberry fields. I wish you could put this paper.
Yeah, I think what we're trying to do is that.
If you put this right here.
If the trees were a foot tall or at the blueberry field, you wouldn't even see Bigwell Hill.
Given like three years.
Well, it's, well, it, it depends on where you're standing to.
Yeah, like their wedding photos, I don't think you'd see it. I think that's their biggest.
So here's, here's what I want people to look at.
Right, right. I only thought about driving up there and just looking myself.
Well, if I did, so this is the point Mount Manok.
And this is his.
What, you have no perception?
Well, here's the thing, here's the line, the site's over here.
Yeah.
So we're taking pictures, we're going from his field to Temple Mount Manok.
You could have a hundred meters review.
It's a big view. But everyone talks about the view to the mountain. I'm saying, if you take your picture.
Yep.
And you, you all show Manok in the center of the picture. That's here, not very far, this is the center of your picture. Project's way over here.
I did, I did the, I did the bearing on it, it's a hundred and four degrees from due north. You can, you know, it's not, Manok's ninety degrees and, and the solar panel's a hundred and two degrees. It's kind of off, it's off to the side, but not that far off.
The bigger thing is you can't, you can't see town, obviously, right, because town drops too far down. There's a small ridge before Bigwell, and then there's obviously a gap.
Can you see the power lines from the mountain areas that goes in front of it?
It, I think it's pretty close. Like, from the cemetery, you definitely, you, you can't see the land, but you can see the wires. So you can get the.
All the someone playing out, you can obviously.
It's pretty close there, it's pretty close. If you go up there and you stand in a park, you know, it depends on where you stand. But I don't think, because you're so far away, it's not a, you know, it's not a big part of the view.
I just know your question. Is that Bigwell, or is that Bigwell? So those are two different regions.
Yeah, I think, I think why you're bringing up Jack is a really important point for us to think about. I think it's very, very.
Why does it try to look at the top of our goal map of the area?
Right, so there's already.
Again, I'll be able to take off, I'm gonna back up. The tree line has five or fifteen.
If at all, but I mean, this is from a chair.
Pretty far.
But like, you might be able to walk this way and see more.
Five, one.
It's not, I don't think, it's not gonna be like smashing.
Yeah. Fourteen. Right.
And again, like, this, if this, I was like, a couple weeks.
I feel that there is not direct on the, it's off to the side, so it's not, because everyone's view of it, it's all up the mountain, so you got. At least, it's not right here, but if there is some way to get a perspective, thank you for that.
I'll play with it, I'll see that, and there's gotta be something.
The key point is the cemetery not.
Is the blueberry farm. Both would be valuable. That would just, not, not thinking about the cemetery, my first thought was just the blueberry farm. And I think most people will.
The cemetery. I'd also say that round the vote, that we can do that, but you won't be able to take it back for the tree. Or just, I love that. Stay out of here. I, I've not, I've played around with it a couple of years ago, whatever, and you can kind of do that.
If you at least pinpoint the property, you can start to see where it is, the picture's. Because right now, we got, do you think it's gonna be the whole hillside? Do you think it's gonna be up here?
I just, I can't try to be able to, wouldn't be able to get where that line is.
But if you try, it's.
I've never, we've done renderings before. Typically, it's a rendering on a public way, show the plantings, like fifty.
I get it, you normally not talking about.
Two point six miles.
You're not talking about wetting, maybe up on the hill three miles away, a straight line.
It may literally just be that KMC fence line, and you can see it.
We saw property lines. Here, we're even just. I think, maybe you should just keep that point on a farthest corner.
I think a KMC file.
Cause that KMC file probably would be about a big absence. Yeah, whatever you're.
Exactly how we want it to look, you can just see the law by.
Hey, give me right, you know, in the winter, you can see a little more. You know, it's great, you want to find for one side of property, see a little more, it's just.
Three years, we'll see it all.
Yeah. It's the, the construction first here, when it's all brown and blue, where the four was, and it brings in.
I was just on the cobble, uh, in Maine, and there was a pretty good array of the law, and it was really
I didn't even say anything, so you could tell what it was, but it wasn't like.
People catch you by, you did go rascally, so it just looked like something else.
I don't think I have any more questions for, for him.
I think it's far less obnoxious than the windmills in Ann Arbor.
Or in, um.
Luntster.
I'm sorry.
And the thing about those is you don't realize how far away from them you are.
Right.
You know, yeah, they're huge.
Yeah, someone put a cell phone tower there, it's blinking light at night, and all that.
So I kind of mentioned it earlier, but conservation commission is currently looking over stuff, and we'll be back to the panel board shortly.
So what's, do we have a, do they, we're, we have to be, we have to give a, a good word on. I'm just saying, we did, and I think I would like to.
We'll let you watch again, headline, everything. When do we have to go with whether or not these are projects that we're killing now?
Um, I don't see that. Actually, that should, that should happen at the very beginning, yeah, so you can, um, we can, we can include that in the finding. That, people, that, at the beginning. So would this start on Tuesday, since we've got this, is that accepted as the application?
No. It sounds very good.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we're getting close.
Yeah. It's sixty days.
Five days now. Yeah, can't, can't agree to an extension.
So is that gonna put us at September? So, you might, do I do a map? September, September. Sixty-five days.
Sixty-five days.
This is our meeting.
Yes. And I was thinking, what I would like to suggest for the next meeting, I have pages of notes here that maybe it would be helpful if I start to draft this up, these findings and the notes and decisions with the conditions, and then you can review it next time. And if it seems like we've covered everything, then maybe you would be ready at least for a conditional approval if there are some things that are still outstanding, and then that, that gets you to the deadline. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, we're happy to extend any deadlines you guys need, so I don't want you guys to fail run. I think it's practically speaking, door, the two doors. I think practically speaking, door, the two door projects should be able to be closed. I mean, if not, I'd say that's not even the next time. And I think it'd be helpful to go through the exercise of drafting the approvals, capital need decisions together, to make sure we're on the same page in respect to findings and special conditions, et cetera. And then for Bigelow, like, whatever you guys need for extensions. I'm not gonna build this tomorrow, right? So, I still have a lot of work, and I'd rather you guys don't fail rush. I do wanna start the state level permitting, so it gives the comfort that our designs are effectively set, and we're working on the conditions will allow me to start that process. So, I think that's what I'm gonna hurry for.
So, we're all in some digits, so that's always good.
Yeah, so we'll plan on, we'll try to close the door projects on the seventh, mm, twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
And we can, if we need anything drafted up for an extension, Elizabeth, you can reach out to me. You didn't permit it, but for Bigelow, happy to extend it, or you guys are tired of talking about it also. We'll call it, but I defer to you guys.
This will be my next meeting, or if we, if we actually have anyone. Did you recalculate the decommissioning percentage?
I did. That's in that letter of this twenty-third. So, basically, I showed, I didn't do anything to the overall development footprint. I just took the fence, and instead of some areas where I made big, straight lines, I just tightened them up. And we're only two and a half-ish acres from the area of the fence. So, that brought us under thirty-five percent, so we moved that waiver. It was unclear whether or not we were gonna enforce a big waiver on Bigelow Hill Road from five, six to five, but we clarified that tonight. So, the decommissioning was updated to match the new acreage. It changed a little bit because the linear feet of the fence went down a bit, but the footprint itself, the grading area, the clarity stuff, it had all stayed the same. So, that was it. The module count stayed the same. So, it's very close, but now the area, the chairman of the park has also corrected their head of mismatched acreage number.
So, I think, I think we're all set tonight. I do thank you for coming to every meeting and feeling the questions.
Nope, great. Don't worry about those. Alright, so my engineer Jeff, who is on the site, we're up with us, is gonna reach out with John, continue to work on the road spec, but ultimately, that road spec is separate apart. Is the, the spec is now locked into the plan, or will be locked into our plan? The approved plan set that you guys approved, but the classification is off the table now, or off, off the discussion. I'm gonna add a note for selective clearing along the seventy-five foot setback to the east of Bigelow Hill Road's project, to the west of the road. I'm gonna add some notes, I think to all the bumper zones for three projects about dirt boxes, bat boxes, and other environmental benefit, something, something to be, you know...
So, bats underneath these things?
Excuse me?
Bats nest underneath these things?
No, squirrels like to, but we don't see many bats under the hills.
You may first.
That works, so I just wondered.
Yeah, not, not a tremendous amount. I'm gonna wait for a letter from Collins Com, but ultimately, that letter would be just read into the record via the findings, and not necessarily gonna impact much. I'm going to add some notes to the plan about invasive species management. And then I'm gonna do my best on the rendering, Bigelow Hill Road from the cemetery and the blueberry farm. I don't, wait, there's a question. I don't anticipate trying those full plan sets to you guys prior to the meeting. Typically, what I do is that's a condition. I write up all these changes into the permit, and I have to incorporate them. Would you guys like everything incorporated prior to the meeting? So, I asked that question. I feel like I could give you obvious answers, so... I will try. Um, I don't know how fast the engineers can put all that stuff, but I'll try to turn the three plan sets so they have everything, so that when we close, we can reference, you know, plan set dated August twelve, or something like that.
Yeah, I think it could be revised.
Yeah.
So, back to the decommissioning for a minute. I think you said you have two methodologies for that. One is straight, a hundred and twenty-five percent of where we are now. And another one was compounding value over thirty years on like a two percent rate or something like that. Is that, were those the two methodologies?
Yeah, I don't recall what the compounding rate was, but yeah, generally speaking, it's a hundred and twenty-five.
I thought of it in there, the a hundred and twenty-five percent is the one you're going with.
That is the one you're...
It seems like, um, with a relatively small interest rate compounding, you get over a hundred and twenty-five percent pretty quick. So, if you could provide a little bit, little information on what the two numbers were?
Yeah, um...
You knew it was a bigger number, you said.
That's usually what we do. Um, it's all based on what we do in Massachusetts, where it's pretty detailed either or. There's also a tremendous amount of precedent for decommissioning costs. So, frankly, it's less to do with the math and more to do with what's the number the town feels comfortable with. Usually, a decommission estimate gets you close when you agree on a number, or agree the decommissioning plan into the record via the conditional experiment. So, we do.
Are you just looking to confirm the number of hundred number, Jack? I'd just like to know the methodology, how they got there. Like, if, if the decommissioning is a hundred thousand now, and it, and if what the bond is gonna be is a hundred and twenty-five thousand, I just wanna know. What the methodology? Because if the cost is a hundred thousand now, it seems like a hundred and twenty-five thousand thirty years from now isn't high enough.
Right, I agree.
Probably got it in twenty, but your point is still there. When they gave you the escalade out, it's twenty years. That's the point at which we have to decide with the landowner whether or not to extend the lease or not. So, you're, we talk about these things in twenty-year increments. You know, all contracts are twenty-year base with extensions. But yeah, I, I see your point. I'll, I'll do a little work on that, too, ahead of...
Anything else? So, I believe we'll see you here on the twenty-first?
Twenty-first, yeah, for some reason, we're on the fifteen.
Oh, you did have a fifteen. These are the board of selectmen.
That's what it was. That's, that's...
I'll guess fifteen was...
Okay, that's the board of selectively meeting. The fir-, the first thing we have to get done is the roads were between my engineer and John. That's why I had a fifteen.
Okay.
Twenty-first, okay.
Anything else we have to do for that? Do you have a selectman's update?
Well, we, we do. Uh, thank you for asking. I don't know what Curtis is, if Curtis is, had the opportunity to discuss this with the board. I know you've been busy with other things. But we have tentative, we've scheduled a meeting, a hearing on roads. And there's some specific items that I believe, well, while the selectmen can theoretically do whatever we want, it seems like planning thing to me. So, and we may wind up kicking this down the road just a little bit, just because it's better to do it when we've got all our ducks around. But I want you to know what we are thinking. This came out of a couple, there's a couple of issues that we feel are important. So, it came up with the, uh, bridge project with the, uh, state down here on Route twelve. And, uh, well, here, and then down by on the north end. And so, it would be, if they're looking for, they would prefer a temporary closure of Old Keen Road, where it comes into Route twelve, because they're building, because of the nature of their building, a bridge there, and where Lawrence Road is on the opposite side of the, of the river. They would, you would wind up with this bizarre arrangement with three traffic lights and all kinds of coordination. It would simplify things greatly if we simply closed Old Keen Road for the period, that end of it, for the period of the project. So, it would be inconvenient for those of us who like to cut in for the mini mart on our way home, and those people who live on that end of the working team, that would have to drive around and come up. That's the downside. That's the, but it is, it would be temporary. The other thing that is a problem is Prospect Street. So, where Prospect Street over here comes into Route twelve, literally at the bridge. Um, and there's all kinds of crazy stuff with this bridge, because it's a railroad bridge. And even though no one believes the railroad's coming back except me, they have to build it to current railroad standards. And then you find that there's an old road that's under the air, and then the nineteen seventy-five renovation of the bridge is no good. The eighteen forty bridge is just fine. So, all the eighteen forty work is good. They're gonna rip off the eighteen seventy stuff and re, and build it back on top of the eighteen forty stuff, and hopefully, they'll have another thirty years of it. But, so the problem with Prospect Street is, again, they would have to have this bizarre arrangement with lights if you're to be able to come out of Prospect Street and enter Route twelve. And one of the issues that most of us are aware of, uh, is Prospect Street is very dangerous at the top of the hill because of the ledge that sticks out. And so, one of the things that we discussed with the state was for the period of this project, simply having Prospect Street be one-way up to that ledge. It would be two-way past Evan John's house, and there's a apartment building on the right. But it would be one-way from there down. And then when we talked about it, we feel that probably the best thing to do with Prospect Street is simply make it permanently one-way up to that ledge. So, these are the things on the docket. The other problem, the other area of consideration is Depot Street. Depot Street is partially on my property. But that's not, that is an issue for me. But the real issue is, if you, if you are familiar with Depot Street when school is in session, people park in the middle of Depot, literally in the middle of Depot Street, uh, so that it is effectively one-way and wide. And, uh, what we are proposing is that we make Depot Street a one-way street and put, uh, parking spaces on the left, so extend the side walkout, and make it one, not that far, and make it one-way downhill. You'd have, you'd pick up two public parking spaces where people park anyway, on, on Depot Street, and then a handicap space in front of, uh, Kimball Hall. And then you would have, uh, I'm not sure if there's supposed to be a handicap space in front of Helping Hand or not, but sometimes people park there, and sometimes they don't. So, it would give you a one, affirmative one-way down Depot Street. The other issue that came up was visibility on Water Street. There's no way to change that. Uh, there's a sign there. The sign was permitted. Well, the sign was put up. Whether we had permits at that time or not, I have no idea. The visibility is not that bad, and, uh, so, and you would create a true bottleneck if you had that being only, you only had vehicular traffic in, you know, that's a problem. So, I think that is not gonna come up. But so, the proposals that I'm aware of, that we're looking to run by the public and get feedback on, and certainly the planning board, would be permanently making Prospect Street one-way up to where the ledge comes into it, temporarily closing Old Keen Road on the north end, and making Depot Street a one-way downhill. Yes?
Sorry, I have a question as a member of the...
Yeah.
Um, Depot being one-way...
But you don't live in the south, what, what?
Uh, on behalf of family.
Okay.
Depot Street being one-way down, wouldn't it be more efficient to make it one-way up?
No, because the visibility, if you come up Depot Street, is terrible.
Isn't it terrible at Prospect, too?
Uh, it's not as bad as Depot Street.
Why don't we put a stop sign there?
I think it's a...
There's already six stop signs.
No, there's four.
There's five now.
There's one at the bottom of Depot Street.
And then four in that four-way.
Well, that's because it's a four-way intersection.
Right. No, there's, there's five now, though. Anyway, I'm not, that's not what I'm complaining about. A way to bring that up.
Yeah, sorry.
Well, the, the answer is, if you made it one-way coming uphill, you, the, that's the more dangerous of the ways.
Of your two options.
Right, of your two options, and that's the least workable.
Okay.
So, that was, that's the reasoning there.
I just figured I'd ask.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you.
The, you know, the correct answer is to tear everything down and redesign the proper lines of sight and everything, but I don't think that's happening.
Unfortunately.
Yeah. A, a stop sign at, at Prospect Street on High Street, we tried that, and it makes, it's really good, but... If, if you live, as you once did, uh, in, on Russell Avenue or Brook Street or Prospect Street, and you come up to the Depot Street, and it's early in the morning, and people are well off of, off of West Hill drinking their coffee, they can't see, they couldn't see you if they wanted to, and they don't really want to. And then you have the problem of the congestion with parking on Central Square. Technically, the two sides of the road are, that's considered Central Square, and there's a half a dozen, well, probably a dozen parking spaces on the two sides. And when you have delivery trucks there for the deli, and, you know, somebody's coming in to open up the Helping Hand.
Impossible to see.
It's, it, it's very sketchy, so, uh, that's the reason we're making it one-way downhill. So, that's the approach. Those are the things that we were planning on discussing at the meeting. If you all have thoughts on it, we are certainly...
Do you have a date for the meeting?
Yes. Tendative, well, it's set, but we may boot it out.
I don't know if I was...
Twenty-eight.
Community agreement?
I'm sorry?
Sorry, I was...
What?
I interrupted.
Oh, community, uh, hour, something, and then public hearing on Troy Street at five P M. Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
Yeah. So, is that for your next meeting? And we, depending upon what we, our guy at the next selectmen's meeting, maybe we'll pick that as a counter. So, that was, that was it. And I see you have an agenda item on your, uh, files. Was Amanda making a presentation tonight, or did she do it?
She did, come to you.
So, she came and left.
We had her take care of the first one for you. She don't like...
Where'd that go?
Good, she just kinda asked us where the things were. We told her, this is a presentation we're gonna file, and she wanted to have your file cabinet for one, and then we figured they wanted to tell us what we're using and what we may need. I couldn't tell you what we had anyways, so to tell her a number.
Did she give you the same lecture she gave this selectman? She gave us a count of the number of file cabinets, and then the number of them actually work? Is like, it's a, it's a low fraction.
But we didn't get that.
Oh, yeah.
We got some nice suggestion about make sure we had something set up for maps, site plans.
Yes.
She asked questions about what, had we kept what not. We can tell her, you know, if you have questions. Just give it to Abby.
Yeah.
They'll bring it to us, and we can look it over and say yes or no.
Well, that's what we do with everything in this building, is we give it to Abby.
Exactly.
Because they should, because they should not pay a penny for paper, right?
You, you all are aware that you have another map file upstairs, right?
Yes, she did mention that.
She mentioned that? If, if, if it was me, I would want them in the same, because same floor.
She did mention, maybe if possible, bring that map one down.
Yeah. And the other, in my discussions with her, I said, I really think that these maps should be indexed in some way, because the current system... be indexed in some way because the current system is if you look, if you're looking for the street plan for Granite Street, which is, it's over there, but the way you find it is you keep opening the door and flipping through till you find it. And when you run out of doors, you go to the other, you upstairs, which we can do better. And that's, that's the intent. We have the opportunity for some lateral files. And one of the things, one of, and a compliment to this part of the town, the planning board, she said the most consistent files are in the planning board files. And the second would be the court of adjustment. So mostly the stuff is there. The biggest complaint is fourteen copies of one thing of exactly the same thing. You know, so that is unnecessary. And she has made checklists of minimum standards for what should be in files. Has she shared those with you?
She didn't share with us, but she asked us what we knew had to be kept and stuff.
She will look for that, but she does have, I know that she's got, because she shared it with a select board and I talked to her off the side as well. So I know she's got checklists ready to throw. I guess she wanted to see if there was something in common.
Yeah, I feel like she was trying to see what we needed and what we were expecting.
Yeah, what we could do digitally, what we could...
And then we told her, you'll, based on what you find, come to us with recommendations, file cabinets.
And, and that's, you know, so this is a food for thought thing organizationally. The, the, we share a vendor, my company and account, Worldwide Computer Solutions. And so for at least ten years, our files are all digital. We close, we all pay work for file closing and actually mostly they just send the numbers PDFs now, but we, we put them into an electronic file, which is on the backside of our website. It's literally the same program that the town has, except the town pays more money for it, uh, which I don't understand that. So the potential to digitize our files, I believe we have the capacity. You know, there's a manpower issue and we certainly haven't had that. And God knows, we don't need another project in this building, but...
She did mention digitizing stuff.
Yeah.
She wanted to know what she could.
Yeah.
And I brought the discussion of the site plans had to be kept and...
Well, and some of the things, the old linens and the, and stuff, you're going to want to keep anyway. You know, if, if you should, when you have nothing else to think about here, whenever that day happens, uh, you know, you should kind of think about what, what do you want this to look like for the next time? And, you know, we, you know, we may not actually have been in the budget, but maybe we moved some money around to make this happen because we all seem to think it's important. Kind of that. And, uh, other than that, I think that's plenty for the selector, for people who want to go home.
Were you guys here for the solar or something else?
It's interesting. And definitely for the solar. I'm Joyce. This is Sam Moore. We live at the end of Big Low House on the, you know, just before the color. And so obviously we have vested interest in everything that's happening. We respect greatly your role in this and your due diligence of what you've put into research and everything else. Our druthers is leave us alone. That's our druthers. And, um, but also knowing that it's not just about us. And, um, so anyway, we have the other meetings, my sister, my brother, my mom did because we were in Montana. Sorry. But now we're back. And just a great deal of interest in the town of Troy. My parents have been here for a long, long time. And, um, so anyway, it's just learning. And that's kind of it. So we're still just learning.
Just want to make sure we're ignoring you.
What's that?
I want to make sure we weren't ignoring you again, something, so.
Oh, we, we were under the impression that this, we would not be allowed to speak. So we were prepared to not be recognized. So thank you, God, very much.
Well, the public portion of the site plan was technically closed, but as a board, we technically do still provide the public an opportunity.
That was not our expectation.
We generally try to be pretty, pretty good with the public.
And I think the view from the cemetery is wonderful. So there it is. It's a great place to meditate. Really puts things in perspective. Got all these great stones there. You want our breathing? Thank you.
Can you get over the vocal on it?
So between us, you have one whole person. Thank you.
She's got the knees.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night, folks.
Do you have anything else in the joint for blood? I'll send it to a guy. You do a jury at ten nineteen?
Ten nineteen.